Why I know it is so thin.
I'm not sure we're gonna wait for it Jake.
Yeah, so we had complaints that there was no audio to the stream.
We'll go ahead and get started. Centerville City Council is now in session. Thank you for your patience as we had a little bit of a delay finishing a work session that the city council held with, together with the planning commission and reconfiguring the room. We appreciate so many of you coming out to join us tonight. We have a number of public hearings on the, on the agenda and we'll look forward to hearing from, from the audience during that time. We'll also note that we are streaming these city council meetings live on YouTube, so whatever you say may live on in infamy for a long time. We'll note for the record that all the members of the city council are present. We'll start tonight with a pledge of allegiance and we've asked one of our scouts Kyle Summer if he would come to the, the microphone and lead us in the pledge of allegiance, after which Councilwoman Robin Meekham will give us a prayer or a thought.
Will the audience please arise? Those in uniform salute, those not in uniform, put your hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The audience may be seated.
Thank you Kyle.
I'd like to start with a quote. "We're blessed with the opportunity to stand for something, for liberty and freedom and fairness, and these things are worth fighting for, worth devoting our lives to," by Ronald Reagan. Our kind heavenly father, we are so very grateful for the great community that we live in, for our first responders, and for those that are so willing to serve in our community. I ask you please for a special blessing to be on those that are keeping these lands free, and especially at this time for our first responders who are really putting their lives out to protect us. I ask you to bless us as a counselor, council, that we will be able to make the choices that are best for this community and for the people that are living in it now. And I say these prayers, Christ amen.
Amen. Thank you Robin. Appreciate that. Especially appreciate the mention of our first responders in our, in this time of, of social unrest in our, in our country. I think it's important that we recognize the great service that our, our police force provides to our city. We have a great group of police officers and a great, led by a fantastic police chief, and we sincerely appreciate their service, as well as the other officers and first responders in, in our community. On our agenda tonight, many of you are probably here for some of the public hearings, we're gonna talk about the urban deer control plan, as well as some bicycle lanes and some zoning code amendments. If you're here to speak on one of those, we'd encourage you to do it during the public hearing for that specific items, item. We will also start, as, as we do each meeting, with a general open session where any member of the community can, can speak to the council for a few minutes on any mem, any item of municipal concern. I'll go ahead and open the public hearing and invite anyone who would like to speak to come to the microphone, you're welcome to address, address the council.
Good evening council and mayor. My name is Rhonda Perks. I am a staff member at Congressman Chris Stewart's office, and I'm just here tonight to mostly come and thank you for your work in Centerville City and to let you know that we at the congressional office would be happy to help with any federal issues that come up. I thought I might just give a couple of announcements as well. Our office is currently in the midst of doing a school supply drive for children refugees. We have 25,000 refugees under the age of 18 in the state of Utah, and most of them will be going to school. And we are trying to ease that burden on our educators and those families as well, and are hoping to gather some pencils and paper and crayons and, you know, all those types of things. So, there's information on the website, on our website, which is stewart.house.gov if anyone is interested in that, and I've left some little flyers out on your table as well. We're also gonna be doing a mobile casework office here in Davis County. It will be at the South Branch Library located in Bountiful on August 9th. That is not, that is not a, the congressman will not be there, but we will be there as staff with some laptops and anyone that needs to come and perhaps open a case for us to help them with any federal issues, VA, immigration, social security, IRS, anything like that, we can open a case and maybe make some congressional inquiries. So if you have any constituents that maybe need help with those issues, we are gonna be there that day. We like to do that once a year in each of the counties, so that maybe, you know, elderly people or people that work long hours don't have to necessarily drive out to fill out forms, they can just come and, and do that right there in their own county. And then I also wanted to mention that on August 23rd, which is the night before school starts here in Davis County, we're gonna be inviting each of the city youth councils to come meet the congressman and just kinda have a roundtable discussion. So we'll be, we'll be contacting the, the, probably the advisor I would say for your youth council. So, we're really looking forward to those things, and again, thank you so much for your efforts. We, we really, really appreciate our city councils, so, thank you.
Alright, thank you Rhonda. And i- if you have information on that refugee school supply drive, we can advertise that on our, on our Facebook page or, or city's Twitter account.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's interesting enough, I was talking to one of the chief educators of the Granite School District, and he said that in that district alone, they have 80 spoken languages right now. So, there's quite a refugee population that's coming in.
Anyone else would like to speak during the open session? Seeing none, I'll close the open session and move to our agenda item. The first is to review the minutes quickly if we can. We have two, two items, or two sets of minutes, the work session of Tuesday, June 21st, and then the regular meeting minutes from the 21st. Any corrections or amendments to suggest for either of those? If not, I would look for a, a motion to approve both sets of minutes from June 21st.
So moved. Katie, there was just a missing T in Mayor Cutler on page three.
I didn't even miss that.
Second.
So moved to second, we, that we adopt the minutes from June 21st, both the work session and regular city council meeting minutes? Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously, thank you. We have a summary action calendar to, that has four items on it. Are there any of these items which you have questions about that we would, that you wanna take separately? The items, we can see there are agreement on flood control or, or stormwater, excuse me, reporting, deferral agreement for the Butters property, and then fixing a typo on the water rates and the purchase of a truck that was budgeted according to state contract.
Mayor, I move that we approve the summary action calendar.
Second.
So moved to second, we approve the summary action calendar. Any further discussion, questions on those? All in fa, Stephanie?
I did. Is this the one that I, that I read, that it was a 90-day notice that they would be putting in their, putting in the sidewalk if the city asked for it? I don't remember if that's in.
Deferral agreement?
Yes.
Which is our standard deferral agreement, Lisa, I think it's a form agreement that we've done many times.
It's a standard agreement, this one has a few additional changes, but only as to the property and the retaining walls and things are already in the public right of way.
So it's, it's the Carlsom?
No. No, it's the Butters.
Okay.
Well. The Carlsom one's not, there's not.
I don't know that I'm really comfortable with that because of the situation of the people who are asking for the deferment. 90 days seems like a really short time to come up with the time for, the money for.
And again, that's our standard one. We typically work with the property owners. One of the reasons we want a shorter time period rather than long is sometimes we have city projects that are coming up, that we wanna make sure to put those improvements in, but certainly we work with the property owners and try to give them as much notice as possible.
I think it's also important to note that it's, it's the city council that's gonna be calling the deferral agreement, calling upon it, and if you want to adjust the time for some reason, you can do so.
When you call on the.
Right, right.
When you call for the.
We recently did that, if you recall, down on the frontage row, we put that sidewalk in, in front of the.
Millet's.
The Millet's house, and, and required them to put in the sidewalk at that time. So I, it's been moved to second, we approved the four items on the summary action calendar. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously, thank you. Now what we've all been waiting for, to discuss the deer problem, and, you know, if Congressman Stewart really wants to make a difference in our community, tell him he can do something about controlling these deer, because, you know, Chief Child's been trying to get him to behave, and I've been trying to tell him what to do, and they just won't listen. So we'll start with a, a staff report on this before we, we open it up for a public hearing and to, to hear your comments.
Well, just as a brief review of where we've come from, last fall, the city council adopted a deer control plan that included the option of, the only option at that point in the plan was to trap and euthanize the deer in the trap. It can only be done between August 1st and December 31st. The plan was not approved until in November, and therefore was implemented about December, 1st of December, there, sometime in December, after getting the certificate of registration from the Division of Wildlife Resources. And we literally only had three deer trapped in that timeframe before the period expired December 31. At that point, then, we talked about, okay, relocation option. Could we amend the plan to include a relocation option where the deer would be trapped and transported out of the area, similar to what Bountiful has been doing for the last couple of years? That was added to the plan after going through a public hearing process, and it was, it was approved, but it required a cost of $100 per deer. And the council offered that option in the plan if the property owner came up with $50 per deer, and the city would contribute $50 per deer. Well, as we proceeded to consider implementing that option, DWR advised us that there really is no, was no point in, in trying to trap and relocate deer at that time of the year because, what was the reason? It was, they, they, we weren't gonna, this was March, and there were starting to be plenty of other food for them available, and so attracting them into the trap was not realistic. Get, you can correct me if I'm wrong Chad. This is Chad, Chad Wilson, by the way, with the Division of Wildlife Resources, who has come tonight to answer questions.
We certainly appreciate Chad coming a, a number of times to our city and being patient with us and educating us on, on this process.
So the trapping alternat, trapping and relocating alternative, even though it was added to the plan, was not really a viable option at, as the growing season began. And so we were left without any really viable options during that period of spring and the summer when the deer were gobbling up the, the goods on our residents' property. And so we are here tonight to consider adding an archery option, which would also be limited to the period of August 1st and to, to December 31st, but at least it probably, we consider it has an advantage over the, the initial option of trapping and euthanizing, because we don't have to pull them into a, a trap. Come August 1, when the original option is available again, we still have to attract them into a trap. And there'll still be plenty of food out there, so getting them into the trap is not realistic come August 1. It's gonna be October, November, December before that option, from $100 per deer to $200 per deer. So that's something else that the council may wanna discuss tonight, whether you still want to consider funding that option to some extent, and if, if so, to what extent. But the price has gone up. And he can answer questions about that tonight for you. Literally, it was late this afternoon that I learned that with an email from Chad, 'cause he had just learned it. With that, I guess that explains why we're here for the public hearing and.
Yes, thank you. And I, I wondered if either the chief or, or Mr. Wilson would take a minute to just, to just present the, the acceptable conditions under which archery would be used, and talk about the process for determining when to approve that, that change.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Yeah, we would take a look at the, the particular property. Obviously, we would be wanting to evaluate how many residences are in close proximity and ensure that there's a ample open space without homes nearby, and provide somewhat of a buffer, a safety buffer to where these two, these deer would be taken by bow and arrow. As far as the, and of course have the permission from the landowners, as already stated. As far as the actual hunter, that would be something that I would evaluate on a case by case basis per person. I know we've got Aaron Albison in here today, whom I am acquainted with, been knowing him for some time. He's a definitely a true sportsman and very professional in the way he conducts himself. I, I would have a lot of confidence in, in his abilities and so forth. We do have Wild Arrow Company down here that trains, and I think I would maybe go down and get some of their expertise involved in making those type of decisions and, and criteria and so forth. So I'm confident that we can come up with a safety plan that would be viable, that we could find locations that would be acceptable, and people that would have the competence level that I'd, I'd feel good about.
Thank you for that explanation, appreciate it.
Chief, just a couple suggestions for that safety plan. As an archer myself, I would recommend that there's no engagement allowed over 40 feet, or sorry, 40, or 40 yards, and if all preferable, that it is a tree stand shot angled down towards the ground, so that we reduce the chance of an overflight by an arrow into another property.
Okay, thank you.
I'd also mention that our deer are so tame to human interaction that I imagine they could get very close.
Any other questions for the chief or Mr. Wilson before we open it up for the public hearing? I'm sure there'll be lots of questions during that.
I do have a question for Mr. Wilson regarding, there's been several hunters that have approached me about the tagging situation. What does that look like? Is that a city tag? Is it depredation hunt? What, what's the tag look like?
It'd be a city tag.
It'd be a city tag, okay. So it does not, does not count against their regular tag limit?
No. Yeah, and I, I can give you some examples of what other cities have used, if you'd like to.
That would be fine. That's, that was just a clarification that was being asked of me, is what the, what the tag looked like.
Alright. Let's go ahead and, and open the public hearing, invite anyone who would like to speak to come and state your name and city of residence, and share your, your comments or, or questions with us, please.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, I appreciate everything, and given this opportunity to stand. I come here representing two people tonight. First and foremost, I come as Aaron Albison, ready, Centerville city resident, for my entire life. Most of the people in this room I am fairly acquainted with and have known pretty personally. Like you, like, like police said, or police chief said, he and I go way back more than I want to admit to, or he wants to. But the second person I represent tonight is Wild Arrow. I am a pro-staff member for Wild Arrow Archery. I am sponsored by Wild Arrow, and one of the pro-staff shooters for them, which means that I go and represent them at tournaments and shoots, all across not only the state of Utah, but the Intermountain West. In fact, this last weekend, we had a, a shoot up at Snowbird. This last weekend, I hiked 30 miles, shot over 250 arrows at 200 targets. It, it, it was an extreme event in realism situations. But, the main reason why I'm here tonight is I am the, I, there were four volunteers last year who were on the deer volunteer list, if you want to call it that. I was the only one, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I was the only one who was authorized to use lethal force in order to kill the deer. The other three members were volunteers who would go and check the traps or bait the traps if necessary. Last year, our permit that was issued by the COR, or by the Division of Wildlife Resources and the COR, wasn't actually given to us until the 19th of December. By the time we got traps baited and hauled traps up to the individual properties in snow, it wasn't until two days before Christmas. So technically, we had eight days to try and take 100 deer. It was a lot of work. There were many sleepless nights and many long hours of getting up at 5:30 in the morning to go check traps and staying up till 10 o'clock at night after going back out and rebaiting the traps, trying to help out the city. I was able to kill and harvest three deer. Many of those came as a surprise to a couple of the city residents, because some of them happened on Christmas Eve, which was taking away my personal time from my family, and the other one happened New Year's Day, or excuse me, the night before New Year's Day. New Year's Eve is when it happened, at 4 o'clock. It was an 11th hour deer. All those deer were not wanted by the residents. I was able to take those deer and use them for my own personal use. I donated my personal truck, my personal time, didn't require anything from the city, except for a box of 12-gauge shotguns to use from the chief of police, in order, based on the regulations, in order to kill those deer efficiently and quickly. Many times last year trapping deer, we would trap deer or come up to traps, and the traps were absolutely destroyed, except for the back end, because either the apples were frozen or there was other food sources that they had pawned and pawed at through the frozen ground in order to get to, that there were deer that were not in the trap. Honestly, from me to you, Mr. Thacker, that I honestly, and I have four or five members of the police with me as I was doing the harvesting, anytime I got a call or I would check it, my first phone call was to, to Centerville City or Davis County Dispatch and saying, "I need, I need Centerville, this is the deer volunteer guy, can you send him over?" And they would send four or five cops shot in the road, you know, and, and make sure the safety was not a concern, and then I would go over and do my job. It wasn't a fun job to walk up and point-blank shoot a deer, an animal that I love and care about, and spend many of my hours up on the mountain looking at them. I enjoy them. It wasn't fun, but it was necessary. I understand they cause a huge problem, and in those circumstances, and I could have easily harvested four or five other deer, within, standing right by the trap, within legal hour shooting time, after, not after dark. It would not have been a problem. Many times I would drive up to the rigby property and check traps, and they weren't around it, but they were around the haystack. And honestly, there are many times that I got out of my truck and they wouldn't even move, except to flick their ear to see what I was doing. I, I come to you tonight to pose the question that, George, I, sorry, I can't say your last name, I just see it from this angle, but I apologize. I, I come to you tonight to talk a little bit about the scenarios of archery. Being a pro-staff shooter, I am ethical. I'm an ethical hunter. I do not believe in making a shot just because it's present, or trying to push the limits or the boundaries of making a shot just because it's the biggest deer, the biggest elk, or an opportunity to fill my freezer. I look at wind, I look at my background, I look at every possible scenario, whether I have to drag that animal out of the bottom of a freaking cliff, or whether I'm gonna go down in there with salt and pepper and a fork, because I'm gonna eat it down there. Those scenarios have happened, because I have packed animals out, and I'm not afraid to. But the situation of being able to hang a tree stand in a, in a, in a situation like the rigby property, for instance, yes, it would be ethical that way, you know, and, and given that situation and scenario, it's a lot of time to sit in a tree stand. I've sat in way too many hours of a tree stand, waiting for that deer to come in. It, it's not fun. My, my back and legs hurt from sitting in a tree stand that's awkward that way. If it were to be possible, I would recommend or suggest to the city council that if we can, in those scenarios, when we are checking a trap or baiting the traps, because it is August and it's September, it's 95 degrees, deer aren't out looking for food, they already have plenty of body fat, they're sitting underneath a shaded tree, getting out of the sun just as much as you and I would be. Do it, because it's only going to help you guys. Now, that being said, it's my personal money, it's my arrows, it's my bow, it's my time. Let me make an ethical shot to help the city, to help the rigbies, good night. Don't limit me on specific to sitting in a tree stand, limit me on where I can shoot, and if those deer.
Let, let me clarify that. When I said a tree stand style shot, what I mean is I would prefer, at all cases where we can, that's an angle that reduces the opportunity for a skip.
Absolutely.
Otherwise. And the hunters that the chief would approve, I'm quite sure that he'll vet them against, what, what is the shot you're willing to take? Because what I do not wanna see is, I do not wanna see a rank amateur out there who says, "I can't tell the difference between 40 yards and 50 yards," and they let it fly.
Absolutely, and I would concur with that. And, and, I mean, I shoot three times, four times a week, and, you know, in talking with some of the guys down at Wild Arrow, there are, there are more of us that are ethical and adequate that way.
Right.
Would never question a 50-yard shot ethically on an animal, purely because you wanna kill it as humanely as possible.
Right, and, and we, we share the same opinion, as, as a hunter, I believe in ethical shots only, and in where this would be inside the, the boundaries of a city, it's not only ethical shots I'm worried about, it's safety shots.
Absolutely. And, I mean, the last thing I want is an animal running through a neighborhood.
Right.
Or running into a backyard with a bloody arrow sticking out of it, or, or bleeding to death, you know, for the two minutes it's gonna do that and have it ruin some child, honestly, you know?
Right.
That scared that. Anyway, thank you guys, I appreciate that.
Thanks, sir.
If there's any questions that I can answer about last year, by all means, but that's, there you go. Thank you.
My name is Doug Hancy, I live at 112 East Jennings Lane, and I'm in that rigby area, and I brought along a show and tell. The deer are still eating, and they're eating beautifully in our yard. Our yard has become Chuckarama to the deer population in Centerville. We have so many lovely offerings on the, on our menu that they are participating in quite frequently, which include everything from my wife's flowers to everything that's in the vegetable garden. We garden part of the, the D-Rigby part of the rigby farm, and the deer are in there literally every night, you can see their footprints, and they eat anything and everything. We've spent hundreds on hundreds on hundreds of dollars trying to protect baby plants with wire cages and, and other, other modalities, trying to fight them off. We encourage the city to, to take advantage of the ethical hunting options that are available to, to dispatch some of these animals. These are not mountain deer, these are urban deer. I, I work here by the farmer's insurance office, in the middle of the day, I can look straight across Main Street and find two or three deers walking up and down, that would be Second South, in the middle of the road, which becomes a very, a very dangerous public problem for vehicles that are coming along that are distracted, a lot of kids walking up and down this Main Street area. And I would encourage you to look at it from a public protection point of view as well. And we would encourage that the, that we reduce this, this deer population because of the expense that it is to so many people who are trying to, to substitute their food budget off of their, off of their gardens. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I would be happy to pass around this delightful tomato, which has been chewed on, gnawed on, and not fully consumed by the deer in our neighborhood.
Marion Jensen, seventeen thirty-eight North Maine, Centerville. First of all, thank you, Paul, and thank you, Steve, for coming to my house when I had had it, and you know that. Uh, I have two four-point bucks, pardon me, I've got asthma, going through the yard in the middle of the day, Friday afternoon about three o'clock, a four-point buck went through and took a look at me and kept on going. Uh, they're out every night, if you go up to Bill Rigby's field before you go home tonight, you'll probably see maybe four or six bucks and several does. So they are everywhere, and I would appreciate anything you can do to, um, bring the deer population under control. Um, the best thing that happened last winter, and it's too sad to say that, we, I had seven deer killed within two blocks of my house. Now, that's expensive for whoever hit them with their car. Uh, and so I would appreciate anything that you can do to help us. Thank you.
Thanks, Marion.
Hi, I'm Bill Rigby, I live at sixteen sixteen North Maine in Centerville. I just, I, I agree, I'm, I, I'm totally excited about archery, and if they harvest it for the meat, I think that's great. There is a huge problem, they're not, they're not scared of people anymore, they don't even move. My sister was here for a month this summer from Chicago, and she was walking up the street, or walking up our dirt road from getting the paper, and one ran right at her, a doe ran right towards her and just went behind her, so I don't, I wonder if, you know, this fall, when we have six, uh, bucks out in my alfalfa field on Jennings Lane, are the bucks gonna get, you know, when it becomes mating season, are they gonna be more aggressive? I don't know, but I, I worry about that because they're so comfortable with humans. So I just, I'm, I'm appreciative of any, of any and all help that we can get to at least thin the herd down because there's way too many deer. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak?
Wow.
Again?
Seeing that I'll close the public hearing, and, but before we move to the city council, I just wanted to give Chad Wilson from the D W R, if he has any experiences from other communities that he'd like to share with us in terms of the archery experience, and any lessons learned that we should apply.
Yeah, I'm not real familiar with any of the other cities that have done archery. Highland City has, but that's out of my region, so I've done that. I participated in- In Highland? Yeah, I mean, it's, from what I understand, it's a very effective way to go. They've seen a huge difference in what they've done. What did they have, Aaron, like five different archers that could, that could partake? So it was, you know, it was limited to, you had to go through a pretty rigorous course, too, didn't you?
Yeah, you had to go attend an archery course, um, and you had to hit some areas inside of a certain range size down at an archery shop, a little larger shop. It was, it was petition within, they would be the qualification with approval from the chief of police to need to do it. But then, in terms of that, they give you tags and then you would have locations. Um, most of the people were Centerville, or, excuse me, had a residence. There were a couple that were allowed to go in outside of that range, um, purely based on their skills. Um, so we were able to go down there, and me and a couple of buddies were able to go down there and do it. It was very effective. We did the tree stand, um, there were a couple of field finds in malls that had telephone poles on the backside of the property that the residents would allow us to hang a tree stand, so we were able to find in those certain areas. Um, it, it was very effective in not only removing the deer, but once you, like in the experience last year, um, we were shooting something different.
We want to preserve this-
There's a lot of people on YouTube who aren't hearing half of what you're saying, so we want to give them the-
I do have any voice, but I apologize.
So, um, what I was saying is, um, it was very effective, like last year when we harvested deer, it would take a couple of days because of the blood from when I shot the deer, that the, the, the traps would be utilized again by the other deer. They would take a couple of days for the smell to disperse and the deer would be attracted. Down in Highland, when we were doing it, we would shoot the deer in a field, the deer would go run thirty, forty yards, lay down and die, and it was a deterrent because it was pushing the other deer out. The other deer started noticing that when they got to this certain line, when they started coming in this area, the hunters were shooting them, and the deer started moving back up on the hills. And as the season progressed and the bucks were chasing the does, we did have an increase during the mating season, but the early part of the season, which is when you guys are complaining about it and harvesting your squash and that kind of stuff in that time of year, the deer moved. It was incredible to see a huge migration that way. When we, after we harvested about five or six deer out of a particular field, those deer quit coming to that field, and we actually left it alone for two weeks because the deer weren't coming in, we weren't being successful. So Highland had a great turnout that way, which I would, I would think in certain parts of the city, tre- archery deer would, it would push those deer back up in the hill or they would move back up where it's not there. It's predator prey relationship. When they're being chased and harassed, they're gonna find somewhere else not to be.
How many did they take in Highland, do you know?
Oh, good night. It's like seventy the first year-
Yeah, it was-
-and another like fifty or so, right?
Yeah. I was gonna say, it was around about a hundred and twenty, a hundred and thirty deer in the two years that we participated in. You know, trapping is very effective that they do in Bountiful, I participated in that with the last four years with a nonprofit organization, a conservation group in, in partnership with a division. I've helped on that, we transplanted a lot of deer out of there. There's still a ton of deer in there. I talk with the street department, who I'm friends with on, on, on a weekly basis, and there's still deer inside the city. Still deer inside the city, and they're not moving out. Where you start putting a pra- a predator inside that city, it's gonna push those deer out because they're not gonna be happy, they're not gonna find that, "I'm, I'm welcome here, or I'm not getting harassed, or I'm not afraid of people." I start putting an arrow through a few deer, their problem is gonna start dramatically going downhill.
Thank you.
The other thing it does is, you know, a lot of these, if we trapped like Bountiful, we didn't even start trapping until December, so at that point, you don't know if you're getting resident deer or mountain deer or a mixture. Um, the earlier you can start the removal, the more confident you can be that these are residents deer, and those are the ones that we really would like to target.
So how soon would you be willing to start trapping again if, if we want to do that option in addition to the archery?
You know, we could try a few, maybe in September. I, really, in reality, I think it's gonna be the first freeze is when, when we'll start be able to, to trap. We, we tried as early as November in Bountiful, and we had success in the first part of November, but I think you could probably do it in October for sure.
Thank you. So previously, if, if you look in your agreement, Doug, did you have something else you wanted to add? I'll reopen the public comment quickly.
Thank you, Doug Hancey, one-twelve East Jennings Lane, again. Uh, I would, I would encourage the council to consider the archery option versus the, the trapping option. The, the objective here is to reduce the deer population, not just to go out and, and play with them. Uh, setting up the traps was in, was relatively ineffective, and as, as Aaron mentioned, it takes a long time to, to, to take the benefit of a trap, and it's very expensive. As a consequence, sending some qualified hunters in, you, we will eliminate this problem quickly, which is the objective of the, of the engagement. Thank you.
Thanks. So a- as the plan is written, Steve, my understanding is the option to use either, uh, archery is, is, is an option or relocation is an option.
Yes, but if you leave the relocation in, you need to deal with the fact that it's now costing two hundred dollars per deer, and how do you want to cost share that?
Correct.
Or do you even want to leave it in at all?
I- in the past, the council allocated up to five thousand dollars matching residents' contribution for that.
How much of that is left?
Well, we haven't, we haven't used any of it, we included it again in your new budget for this year.
And did anyone donate?
We did have three or four individuals that contributed fifty, hoping that we would get something done, but I think we, and then we refunded it ultimately.
If I may, the way that the plan is written right now, it doesn't actually specify archery as an option there. It do- the way it's written, it's a little bit unclear, but it says use a bolt gun, twenty-two firearm, or frangible shotgun round will be the primary weapon used for euthanization. It doesn't mention-
Do you have the updated version?
You have the red line?
Oh, the red line, the one, no, I don't-
For tonight, the red line version.
I don't have that.
Why don't you put it up there?
Why don't you pull that up? So-
To the question of whether or not to leave the trapping option in, first of all, to clarify, that's the trapping, but then euthanizing, once they're trapped, not trapping and relocating. And I-
I think we, we have all three, we have all, all those options are included in there.
Right, so the, the other point is that, um, it gives, it keeps options wide open for the property owner who has the problem to choose what they feel most comfortable with. Um, and I think the more options for the property owner, the better. And considering we haven't used any of the fund yet, I don't, even with the greater cost, I don't see any harm in still going fifty-fifty, um, which I think was the intent of the other.
Ri- right, that, I mean, my recommendation is we leave that in there, uh, for match fund. We had some very vocal people last time, especially maybe more in the south end of the city that, that wanted to see deer relocated instead of removed, and if, if they want to donate, um, to that cause, I think we should support that. Um, I think i- it's clear that we've got property owners in, in other problem areas who, who want removal of the deer, and, and this would give us the maximum flexibility.
When this was first presented, that was my, my first thought is why isn't there an archery option? I mean, when I put it out to my close associates who are bow hunter slash bow hikers, because that's all we tend to do is hike around a lot, um, I had four names of people who pulled a William Tell in the last year who could, who could call this off. So I, I actually think that that would be a much more successful option, and it will, it will yield faster results. And if you're getting deer standing that far away, that's a shot I could make, you know, so I'm, I'm, I'm not as concerned about that, as long as it's, it's well understood that those who are qualified under the program take the ethical shot and the safest shot possible for the surrounding residents and that the property's been vetted by the police chief. I would say this is going to be the most effective and quickest option to, to bring this under control rather than waiting on a trap. It's, it's proactive engagement of the deer. So I'm, I'm in total support of it.
Chad?
Just a couple things. On our rule, it only allows for you to charge a resident up to fifty dollars. So on that cost share, it couldn't be fifty-fifty, it'd be the city one fifty and the resident fifty.
Those, as the D W R rules?
Yeah, that's under our rule. And then, as Aaron-
See, you can increase the price on us, but we can't share that.
Yeah, we're used to that, huh?
Well, that, that simplifies the business.
And as, as Aaron pointed out to me too here, and this is, this is a very true point, when we started out in Bountiful, we only had a handful of traps, and if you only have a handful of traps and you catch two deer, it isn't worth it. Like right now, the deer were taken to, uh, to the mantis, so it's a, it's a trip, and you don't, for two deer, it's not worth it. Um, so if there's going to be a trap and relocation, I don't know if, you know, for one or two, unless it's in conjunction with Bountiful City on those days, it probably isn't worth it. Um, Bountiful City, we probably had up to twenty, twenty-five traps out during the year last year, and so it just makes it a lot more efficient to be able to, to catch more deer at once.
Thank you for that input, that's helpful. My recommendation to the council is, is not to eliminate that option, but I think there's an understanding of, of what might be more effective in the short term, but if, if you recall the, the, many of the folks who spoke before, there were some who felt very strongly that they wanted, uh, other options, and we can leave that as an option, but I think manage it carefully under the D W R's constraints.
Well, I, I think, I, I think you can leave it in, but the problem is, is the individuals who, who've participated are also the archers, so, uh, I mean, you could leave that option open, but I'm not sure necessarily you're gonna have a lot of volunteer takers if, if an archery option is open, so-
Correct.
Yeah, I mean, at lea- I, I have no problem leaving it in, I just don't think that it's going to get used that much. And, um, as such, I would motion to approve the amendments, you know, to include urban deer control via archery.
Second.
So it's a moved and second, we approved the amended urban deer control plan. Would, would that include, uh, George, the change, we also need to change the language from, uh, a hundred dollars to two hundred dollars per deer with the resident paying fifty, and the council, the city matching the other hundred and fifty up to the budget amount that we've put in there?
Yes.
I don't, I don't think the, oh, those numbers are in there, okay.
Yeah, we would have to make that change.
I just need to make that change.
Pointing out. So I will add that to the, to the motion without amendment.
Further discussion from the council? All right, I'll call for a vote then, all in favor of, uh, adopting the amended urban deer removal plan or control plan?
Aye.
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 And those opposed? Uh, that passes, I'm not clear if it was unanimous, I'm not-
No.
No.
Did you want to do it as a roll call?
No, it's okay.
We, we need to know the, the correct vote.
I'm, I'm not voting for it. I definitely, we need to get rid of the deer, and I'm all for getting rid of the deer, but I just, I, I wouldn't be allowed to go home if I voted for it.
So you're a no vote?
I'm a no vote for it.
Okay.
But I do think we-
What I'm saying, or no?
No, I'm a no vote. I, I do want to, I do want to do something with the deer. I even have been trying to get more information on, up in Idaho, they are shooting the deer and they are, hmm, think of the word.
Yeah, they're, they're trying to sterilize them.
Sterilizing them, so that they are getting rid of the problem for, forever. I mean, there's not, there's things like that, I just-
I think Mayor, also, just for more context here, you may have read in the paper that Provo now has a problem and that they're trying to deal with, so you, more and more cities along the Wasatch Front or in the urban areas are having to deal with this, so there's many, there's many cities along with us in this matter. Yeah.
Well, that, that, we'll rule that passes four to one, uh, and we'll get to work putting this in place, so we appreciate your help, Aaron, on this, and, and the others, and, Chief, you and Bruce Cox and the other staff, uh, who, who worked with us on this. So thank, thank you.
I'll, I'll stand behind the program, I'll join. I may not qualify, but I'll join.
Yeah, you're gonna say you-
It's all good. Aaron Alston, by the way, since I'm getting you.
Thank you, Steve.
We've been touched, too.
Thank you.
I need to get my mitts attached.
I'm good with a fifteen yard shot, I can make that.
Forty, yeah, I'm still good.
All right, thanks, Aaron.
It's an excuse to get a better bow.
Okay, next up, we have a, a public hearing scheduled on the bicycle and non-motorized vehicle pathways and trails master plan, uh, map. We've, for years, we've, we've had a trails plan and some bicycle, uh, bicycle routes. We have, they've not been a part of the general plan, which Corey can explain in a, in a staff report and how we want to remedy, to make sure our general plan aligns with, with the way we've been conducting, uh, planning in, in the city.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, this is amendment to our general plan, doesn't involve the zoning ordinance. Uh, this was approached to me by city administration. Uh, we do have a little small section on bicycle trails in this community facilities element. We do have an adoptive map. My understanding is, is that in two thousand and twelve, the Trails Committee upgraded their map, so the current version that's in the general plan is inconsistent with what the Trails Committees has adopted. Trails Committee is the one you see on the website, so we need to update that map, so that's part of the request. The other one is, is, uh, the, there was a discouragement of certain types of class bike lanes in the original language. We've gone apparently and constructed some facilities that meet the definition that was discouraged, and so the Trails Committee wanted to relight, rewrite that language, and, uh, they provided us a copy of their recommendation to the commission. In short, commission debated it, uh, it was unanimous vote to accept the general plan changes. There was a little bit of concern raised at the commission by one commissioner, uh, just worried about, uh, some very intensive bike lane type facilities, and, and wanted to make sure that we weren't saying we have to do the very intensive, um, the class three and the class two and the class one can have a variation, and, uh, but in the end, he, he did vote, I think it was Commissioner Daley in the, in the minutes. And so the recommendation is to approve these changes, so we'll bring the general plan in consi- inconsistency with the Trails Committee.
And Corey, I would add to your report, if you may have noticed in the staff report that we did consult with Kevin and Randy, they're part of the Complete Streets Committee, um, and there, let's say there were some subsequent revisions which are redlined in the document that Lisa incorporated with red lines to address their two concerns particularly, plus some other cleanup that Lisa did with the, the wording.
And, and I reviewed this, I think the intent of the Trails Committee is, is great. I think the wording that Lisa, uh, helped us with in this revised version is, is, uh, more, an improvement and more sustainable long-term- I think the wording that Lisa helped us with in this revised version is, is more, an improvement and more sustainable long-term. And I'd, I'd recommend the council consider Lisa's version when adopting this. Further discussion or questions for, or we better open the public hearing? Let's, the, we'll open the public hearing on the general plan amendments for bicycle and non-motorized vehicle pathways and trails master plan map, and invite any who would like to come and speak to us.
Steve looks like a big biker.
He does, he, he, he's, he's not, what did you call it, a-
Man.
A man, a middle-aged man wearing Lycra spandex.
Yeah, middle-aged, a middle-aged man in Lycra, yeah.
But we welcome his comments anyway. Or, or anyone else who would like to speak. Seeing, seeing none, we'll close the, the public hearing and turn to the council for discussion and action.
Okay, so, I, I have some heartburn with declaring Parish Lane Bike Trail that goes over the I-15 overpass. I think that's encouraging traffic in the wrong spot. I can't, driving that road every single morning, a, a biker trying to accelerate to get past the turn lanes, just gonna create traffic headaches coming down that, as well as, how do you merge back in as a bike safely? We already have the cars playing an interesting chicken game, trying to slide three lanes over to get to the left turn. I just see that, if we're encouraging that as a city, as a, as a bike trail, we're just, we're asking for trouble. So I would, I would say do not include that section as part of a recognized bike trail.
Well, let me just ask, are you under, my understanding is that the reason they made the pathway ten feet wide on the bridge and on the west side is because it's to accommodate both.
Yeah, that, that was my understanding as well, is that, that the pedestrian pathway would also be the bike pathway, but that doesn't necessarily clarify it on the map. And I certainly would, I, I think it's, it's great that we have that pedestrian bridge and a very wide pathway that cyclists can use that are, you know, not, not racing or being aggressive. But maybe we could find a way to clarify that, that the path over Parish, on Parish Lane is on the pedestrian bridge and the wide sidewalk, not on the overpass.
Well, and just to clarify on this map, it, it's actually a part of your general plan, so it's a master plan. And if you look at the dashed lines, those are proposed. They're not declaring that that's where they are. So maybe that should be clarified, but if you'll look down in the legend, it's not in, it's not in the legend, it's over there for proposed. So they're saying, long-term, these are the bike routes that we want to try and plan for, and so when we're looking at those routes-
So when UDOT rebuilds the overpass in fifteen years-
Yeah, so it's not actually a declared bike route right now. It's a dashed line, if I am reading that correctly.
Well, and I need to clarify my statement, the east side sidewalk is not ten feet wide, it's six feet wide, I believe. But the bridge and the west side is ten feet, so, just for clarification.
But your point still could be that we don't ever want that section to be part of our master plan. But somehow you have to connect your cyclists to the major trailway over on the other side.
You do, but, you know, I've, I've been to many large bridges, and I find it funny when you're on the Golden Gate Bridge, how many bikers are upset and trying to do a Tour de France time trial, yelling at everyone who is a tourist wandering around on the Golden Gate Bridge, because that's a shared pathway. So, I, I, on a, on a smaller scale, I see the same sort of contention. Bikers and pedestrians don't play well together when you're looking at large biking groups on restricted roadways. So I would, you know, where it's proposed, I would say in the future that we look at how, you know, when UDOT does a rebuild, how they're going to incorporate that traffic flow for bikes, but for now, I wouldn't, I wouldn't put it on there as even, even a dashed line. Just, I wouldn't want to encourage that at all.
And where would that be from? Do you want to take it from me?
Well, before you pursue that conversation, Lisa, I think Stephanie, you're the, are you the, no, Robin.
Robin is the-
Robin's the trail committee-
And that was, they came to the trails and they asked them, where would you like to have a trail?
Right.
So, you know, it was kind of like if you asked me if I want cake from Dick's Market or somewhere else. I'm gonna say I want cake from everywhere. And that's kind of what they did, is they did kind of dream, how, you know, where someday might we be able to have these trails?
Sure.
I don't think it was, you know, oh, we could put that on the overpass now. I think that they were, you know, they came and said, you know, let's update, where would you like to see trails be able to go? And they're, well, we'd like to be able to go over to Legacy. So I think when Lisa says, they're not necessarily, it's more of a wish list than a-
But according to Bruce's conversation with me, this is a high priority for the Trails Committee to have a designated bike way east-west on Parish. And they are presuming that this bridge, pedestrian bridge and the pathway associated with it, will be shared use.
That way, yeah. I think for clarity's sake, what I'd like to do is not to cut discussion short, but just to put on the table a motion to approve this recommendation that came from two of our citizen planning bodies, as, as it is, other than definitely accepting the red line edits on the language. But the map is proposed, and the language is proposed, so we can then work from there. That would be my motion.
I would love to meet with them in a work session. I think the work session we had prior to this meeting was very helpful. And I'd love to meet with the Trails Committee and talk about what is it that they envision. And I, and I would not feel comfortable voting on it, one way or the other. I, I should have taken the time prior to this meeting, but I haven't walked on that pedestrian bridge yet. I'm kind of waiting for it to be officially open. And I'd like to, to feel, what does it feel like, how much space do I feel like I have as a pedestrian? And how do I feel about having a, a bike pass me there before I vote?
So we have a motion on the table to approve the, the staff recommendation, and the Trails Committee recommendation, and the recommendation from the Planning Commission that we update the map and the language. Is there a second to that motion? Okay, that motion fails. You, you really don't want to update the map?
Oh, I think we want to update the map.
Well, the, the map, it was all three in the same motion, so.
Yeah, I, I definitely want to update the map. I, and I, like I said, I think the Trails Committee's done it, but I think Stephanie's got a great idea for us maybe to meet with the Trails Committee and talk about, you know, what do you, what are you foreseeing over Parish Lane? And, you know, if we have any questions, and then I don't see a problem with a pass.
Sure, so as, as noted, these are proposed, there's, there's no bike striping on Jennings Lane, there's no bike striping on Chase Lane, or on the, the narrow part of Fourth East, which is near, very narrow. But this, this gives a, a blueprint of what the Trails Committee does. And, you know, I would encourage the, the council to support the Trails Committee and pass this today, if you want to meet with them and then make some changes to, to that.
Mayor, could I, I, I had Robin's assignment prior to her taking it over, and I sat with the Trails Committee as they made most of these lines in the last little while. Well, not most of, but lots of. And it, it was a very casual, let's hang out and have a good time, and oh, there aren't any lines over here, let's draw some. And I'd really like to, just to make sure that we're all on the same page.
I'm gonna throw a monkey wrench in the works. I am extremely flus- frustrated with, and I, Tammy made, Tammy made this comment earlier in the evening, that bikes have equal right-of-way with vehicles on the road. And I get extremely frustrated with them absolutely exercising it, and slowing traffic and causing problems. I don't know what Paul would say about the issue of bicycles on the roads, but I totally agree with George as far as the majority of Parish Lane. I recognize the fact that there's only one way we're gonna get them across the freeway. And so in that section, there's really no choice. But on the majority of Parish Lane, I think that it ought to be moved and go up to Chase, and then go across the frontage road to get to Parish and go over. And I think that something has to be done to get bikers to accept more responsibility. And I'm just very negative on this whole thing. As a society, we're spending a ton of money creating these bike lanes, and I'm telling you, nobody uses them.
Let, let me just add one thing in deliberation, that I think you're, you at least missed aside on. Your maverick is installing a bicycle facility, and you funded a bicycle facility at that trailhead. I appreciate what you're saying about studying with the, the committee, and I think those are all fine and dandy. But from my level with the proposed lines, the work of your Trails Committee, even if it's slightly a wish list, or was more casual, you've invested in some infrastructure for that connection. And so I think if you're stalling on that infrastructure that you're already building, you know, I question the decisions you've made in the past, because you've obligated, in a shared agreement, a connection to a trailhead. And so I think it is a priority over Parish. I think most people are recognizing it as a shared use. I, I think that if you want to-
As a shared use of the pedestrian bridge?
Yeah. And so I think you've made some decisions, and I'm not saying you have to make it tonight.
Right.
But I think you've set some priorities, and if you're deciding to reverse that, you need to reconsider what you've already funded and participating in.
As far as the pedestrian bridge goes, couldn't we even put a sign up saying bicycles-
Must be walked, or something's- My, my problem is, is that, yes, a bike has the same, as, as was already mentioned, a bike has the same right-of-way usage. They always lose the physics argument, though. And that's the problem, is, is how do we prevent the physics argument from coming up? I don't, I don't want to see an increase of picking people off the road because they made a poor decision, thinking that they had equal rights, which they did, but they just weren't thinking it through. That, that's my main concern.
But my issue is, is that you also have to look at not only decisions that you made in your citizen planning group, but you also remember the state vehicle motor laws issues. And trying to change that on, on a larger level, when you have a large regional community, you have a huge investment by UTA and others into trails. Your UDOT facilities are all measured on alternative transportation modes and evaluated against that. And to try to question as an entirety of whether you like bicycles or not, I think, you know, I, I just question that in your proposed lanes, that you're not giving cred, enough credence to allow the master plan to work itself out, and getting caught up in the irritation of side-by-side riders and so forth. And I know this is challenging, maybe insulting to some, because I know that some of you have had some bad experiences with bike lanes. But it is a part of all of your regional facilities and funding and, and efforts. And I think you need to turn to look at that as your future, then try to resist it.
What I'm thinking, I'm hearing from Stephanie, though, is it's not saying no, it's trying to get with the Trails Committee and understand more of what their intent is.
And I appreciate that, that part, but I think the resistance is the Parish Lane. And I think you need to realize that Parish Lane is-
I just don't want to, I just, logistically is the way my brain works frequently. And if we have a pedestrian bicycle accident on the, on the overpass bridge, that's gonna be a nightmare to try to get first responders to.
I, I understand that, but you've also-
So I want to think through it before we say, hey, we're hundred percent behind this.
I appreciate that, but I'm gonna push back on you. I'm gonna push back from the standpoint that we went out as a staff level, that was not a requirement of zoning, not a requirement of mandatory, negotiated a facility with the park, at the request of the Parks and Rec Committee, put in a trail system, and spent a lot of effort to make that facility, when we opened up with the trail, to be bike-friendly and pedestrian-friendly. And what I'm hearing from the council is, is you're questioning the wisdom of that. And I'm saying, that's all right, you question the wisdom of it, but don't forget the decisions you've already made.
I haven't forgotten, I, I already voted on them. I just want to, I, I'm not a biker, that's where I'm coming from. I'm not a biker, and so it would be beneficial for me to sit with a bunch of bikers and say, so what's the best way to, to present this to the biking community, so that we limit those physics problems that George is talking about?
But this, this is where your biking community is speaking to you. And that's all my pushback. I'm not saying you have to do anything tonight, but I, I, I sense a resistance to something you've set in place. And, and I want you to keep reminded that you've made some past decisions.
Thank you, Corey, for that comment. I, I wanted to, to comment on, on Bill's frustration. I have heard this comment from other Bill, and Steve and I talked this morning about a request from a resident to, and ask the Trails Committee, we, we haven't talked to you about it yet, Robin, to, to write an article for the city newsletter, talking about responsible biking, and, and what is the motorist's responsibility and the bikers' responsibility? How should you handle bikers that are out in traffic? And just some, some comments, because I think a number of people are not sure how to handle bikers that are aggressive. And when, when is it appropriate to give them a little-
Run them off the road?
Well, as, as long as we, as long as we increase the number of citations issued to bikers, I'm, I'm happy with it. It's just serendipitous that today, heading up Fifth East to connect on the South Temple, a biker who did not have the speed for it, cut right in front of me, cut me off, the light turned red, I would have made the light, and then he goes right through the left turn, because no, no traffic, he started on the other side. So the aggressiveness of the bikers, if they're not going to follow the rules either, you know, as long as the enforcement is the same. So it's, that's been my biggest issue. The, the reason I can't support this language is it includes, it includes encumbering new businesses with the need to put on, you know, facilities in place, bicycle maintenance stands, things like that. That's a business owner option. If they want to do that because they want to cater to a biking crowd, that's great. But my hobby should not become the responsibility of a business owner to support. If they choose to do that, that's fine.
Where is that language encumbering a business owner?
Says, um, let's see, where is that language?
I think it's at the bottom of the second to last paragraph.
Create safe places to lock up bicycles, yeah. Include requirements in a new business facility development to include bicycle racks and bicycle maintenance stands with integrated tools.
Let me just give you, you've made decisions on that already.
Who is "we"?
Council.
Which council?
It doesn't matter which council.
Yes, it does, because-
No, it is the council, and the council has created that law.
Lisa will tell you time and time again-
You have the Parish Lane guidelines that were passed that require those elements, and you have the Main Street Plan that already requires those elements. I'm not saying it's right, but your resistance is what I'm trying to say, is balance your resistance of concerns with things that are in place, and things that are being built, and things that have been built. And I just, I, I'm not saying you make a decision, but what I sense is, is that there's an irritation that's overriding the balance of decisions that have already been made.
Well, Corey's- Let's go back to this language. The city should consider adopting requirements for new commercial developments to include bicycle racks and bicycle maintenance stands with integrated tools. To me, that's not any encumbering anyone, that's saying, in your general plan, when you approve new commercial developments, you should consider this.
Well, I kind of toned it down in the red line, so the, the Trails Committee recommendation was to say include requirements, but again, this is just a master plan saying, in the future, we should probably implement-
This is not an ordinance that, that require, is a new business regulation, this is a planning document.
But, so the way it's drafted now, it's proposed, and the new red line says the city should consider adopting requirements. Now, again, if, I, I do think this is a policy consideration. If you really don't want to get into, in the future, adopting zoning code that implements that, you know, then you should, you could take that language out. But it, it is a policy thing, but it doesn't have a lot of teeth. It's just saying, consider it as part of, when, when we're moving forward with our design standards and things. But it would have to be implemented by a zoning code amendment, in my opinion. Just having this language doesn't require anything, it just says, we should look at adopting zoning ordinances that are more specific about bike requirements.
Well, and, and Corey, I was gonna mention, and Lisa's drilled this into my head, we cannot encumber future councils by the decisions we make. If they want to, they want to go back on that, or they want to change those, they can't. And, and so what I'm, what I think Stephanie has said is, is pretty straightforward. Let's, let's get in, let's get the entire council in with the Trails Committee and talk about it, so we understand their intent and capture it correctly.
The, the issue I'm just trying to remind you about is you can do that, I'm not trying to prevent you from doing that. But you have significant things that are in place.
Oh, sure.
And so keep that in mind as you get frustrated and irritated with bikers and problems and so forth. Just keep a balance of where you're at.
Not all of us are frustrated and irritated, not even the majority of the council, so I think you're, I think you're coming a little-
Oh, I, I've heard the frustration about with our crossing lanes, the riding side-by-side, the irritation is there. I'm saying, I'm not justifying what they're doing. I'm just saying, remember that there are state laws that govern this, and when you say, I'm irritated with, that they have rights on the road. They do, and there's nothing you can do to prevent that. So you need to recognize those rights as you make those decisions. That's all I'm saying.
I think they're recognized, but the language here is saying, we're trying to make it a safe place. And what the council, at least from my perspective, what I'm hearing is, we don't have a good understanding of- we don't have a good understanding of what the trails committee wants to do yet to, to make that happen. Ultimately, we want a zero fatality city and bikes are always going to lose.
Yeah, maybe you're just not hearing what I'm saying, but that's, that's what I just wanted to know.
So, so council, let's, let's step back. You can approve this ordinance, you can table it and ask to meet with the trails committee, you can reject the ordinance and leave the inconsistencies that we have. Let's talk about, how, how do we go forward if, if you're feeling that you don't want to approve this tonight?
Well, being on the trails committee, I can tell you, we have an awesome trails committee and they have so much more insight. I don't have a problem with bicyclists. I'm probably the bicyclist that you guys hate. Not going very fast, but I could be in the middle of the road and I like to visit when I ride my bicycle, so what am I saying?
But you probably don't do it in the mid, middle of parish lane.
No, no, well, I did try and go over that overpass once and I did think that was going to be my funeral the next day. I did shoot over there because I couldn't make it back from where I'd started in Bonneville on Legacy. I thought it'd be a great idea to jump the old guard rail and come over and I didn't realize the cars were going to be like this and I was in the middle of them and it was really scary. So, yeah, I've probably been cussed at more than once. But I, I trust our trails committee, I love our trails committee and it is right, like Stephanie says, they are the funnest group of guys and, you know, they put this out and said, tell us where you'd like bike lanes. And it was just kind of thrown around. I think if they were here to answer some of these questions and they don't have any animosity towards bikers, I think we might get a better plan approved if we have them here to say, hey, look guys, this is what we're going to do, or this is how it's going to work. I want to see it passed, so I'd like to see a work session so that our trails committee has a chance to come in and persuade and, and, and work with us. Because I'm telling you, they will work with you and they have wonderful ideas and I think, I think we'll be all right if we can just work with them, I think we can get it passed without any trouble at all.
Well, the other thing, oh, sorry, I do feel this, the red line edits, that there wasn't time to go back to the, to the trails committee, so I would like to give deference to them and say, look, these are some proposed edits and let them comment on these edits as well.
Yeah, that's what I do too. I just think, I know, I'm, like I said, I don't think we need to have any animosity towards the bikers. You know, there's always a bad apple in every group, but let's, let's work with them and, and see if we can't get them what they're after.
So, do you want to motion to table this until there's a chance to meet with them?
Excuse me, Robin, before you do that, if you're going to ask it to be in a work session, I just want to make sure you understand, we've got work sessions stacked up for the next three months. And if instead you could just invite them to come and speak with you in a regular meeting, would you be willing to do that or do you want to have a work session on another night other than a council meeting night?
Or could have the council go on and come to trails committee? They meet on Thursday night.
You could go to their committee meeting.
Yeah, I would think we could go to their committee meeting on Thursday night, it's really fun. You guys love my job.
You'll be jealous.
They're definitely trying to beat me up and take it away from me.
So, yeah, if you're willing to do that, that would be a great option.
I think we could all work together and get it passed without any trouble.
You want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we-
Table the, table this, approval of this ordinance until the council has a chance to meet with the trails committee?
Yes.
And when is their next meeting?
Well, we have one tomorrow night, or, yeah, so it'll have to be August.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Further discussion?
Can I ask, in, partially discussion, Paul, do we have, are there, is there any, are there a significant number of bicycle vehicle accidents in Centerville?
No, they're occasional.
Three a year?
Yeah, it's, it's probably a half a dozen or so a year.
And most of those are school kids.
And a lot of them are younger kids and almost entirely they're the bicyclist's Bicycles are required, they do have rights to be on the road, but they are required to obey every traffic law that a car, that would be applicable to a bicycle that a car has to abide by. They are required to drive, to be on the right side of the road as far as practical, if they're going slower than the normal flow of traffic. There's, there's definitely issues with bicycles and mixing with traffic and cars.
And have you ever had an officer give a bicyclist a ticket?
We, it's, it's rare, but we have. We have, we do do traffic stops on bicyclists. They like to run red lights, they like to run stop signs, they like to do things that they shouldn't be doing and they tend to think that, a lot of them, some of them, tend to think that the laws don't apply to them. So there is an educational aspect to it. If I might, while I'm here, might make a comment as well, as I've been thinking about that, on the parish lane overpasses are very, and I agree with Councilman McKeon as far as parish lane overpasses and the traffic, mingling bikes in there, that's, that's a scary thought. Going over the brid, the pedestrian bridge, you're going to mix them with pedestrians, but far less, there's not a lot of pedestrian traffic going over that bridge, there's a ton of vehicle traffic. And we already have that mixture on all of, on the Legacy Parkway, when the trails are already in place, there's still a lot of pedestrian traffic and bicycle traffic on those same type of paths that we have. But I agree, it's, it's a real issue. We do get auto bicycle crashes, probably six to 10 a year or so.
Thank you. It'd probably be helpful to have maybe somebody from the department join that discussion or at least give us any feedback on, on, on planning guidance.
And the proposed routes, if, if the police have, other than the exception that I already had to that, if there's anything else on those routes that proves out to be exceptionally worrying, that would be good to know.
And if it was, the trails committee would work with you. Like I said, they looked at this, they just tried to think of where, you know, people, you know, where they want to be able to get to. And we are going to publish this, so we do want it for people out of town to know where they can go. So I think to work with them, have, have you guys come to trails committee, I think it'll work out and pass without any problems.
Yeah, and I would rather see the bicyclists not on parish lane. I understand the overpass, that's a choke point, there's no other option there, but personally, I think it would be better to move them some, somewhere off of parish.
Thanks, chief. So we have a motion on the table and I think we had a second to table this item until the city council has a chance to meet with the trails committee. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so you'll take it back to the trails committee and, and give us all an invite to a Thursday meeting and, do you know when that will be right now? Put it on our calendars?
The fourth Thursday of August.
The fourth Thursday of August.
Which is-
At like eight o'clock at night. They have the awesomest time to meet. I'm jealous.
That's the 25th?
Didn't they go to Tu- Tuesday, I thought?
No, they're Thursdays.
No, it was the museum that changed to Tuesday.
Oh, so that's the 25th?
25th, yep.
Which is the day after school starts.
Do you think it's too late, Robin, to get them in next, next week?
Well, it's tomorrow.
What, it's tomorrow? Tomorrow's the fourth?
Or, day after Thursday.
But we just directed them to deal with the-
The red line.
Main Street issue on, at that meeting, did we not?
So isn't it next week, the fourth Thursday?
Yep. We just asked them to deal with the painting of the-
Yes, it is.
They changed it, they changed it for July because they could, people couldn't come.
Oh, okay.
And so, yeah, I don't think, there's no way we can get it in, but we can probably do it on the 25th. And we also, this, this one we need to work on the-
Main Street.
Now, the pedestrian bridge.
Oh, planning the ceremony, yeah.
Yeah, ribbon cutting.
We have them very busy. And so are they normally the fourth Tuesday, so that would be the 25th?
Fourth Thursday.
I mean Thursday, so that would be the 25th of August.
I'll check and I'll send an email and let you all know tomorrow for sure.
Great, thank you very much. Next item on our agenda, before we get to take a break, is a public hearing on the zoning code amendments around constrained lands. We talked only so very briefly earlier, but Cory, you want to give us a, a report here?
Yeah, this one's the public hearing on the zoning text amendment now. This was generated by the council. You wanted to look at how gross densities are applied on lands, on lands to be developed. Again, I think some of the sounding board issues was with the Hofoca property and the issue associated of how that density was calculated. But it extended further. We had a discussion on that and also talked about the hillside. You had made a motion, I think if I recall correctly, to ask the planning commission if they found a merit and have their input. We took that to the planning commission, asked that question of them. At that time, they said, yeah, let's take a look at it. So we went back, rescheduled the notices for actual amendments and the language that you see submitted to your report was a massage from the staff's original language and then that night with the commission. I think some of it centered around the issue of the use of the term sensitives because we have a section of the zoning ordinance that's called sensitive lands, which is really a hillside ordinance. We have not rewritten that section, we just carried over in 2003, the older hillside ordinance addressing geologic hazards in development that needs, still needs to be updated, that ordinance. So we, we got away from the term sensitive lands and discussed the issue of constrained lands. And we went back into the definitions section because that's where you glean what the terms were. The commission redrafted it to use the word constrained. We labeled what would be developable land, what's constrained land and so forth, so that that language of definitions then gets translated on how the gross densities are applied. Two planning commissioners were missing that night, they were out of town. Our vice chair, Logan, handled the meeting. It was an interesting discussion because from my perspective, I did the most simplest and easiest way to address the issue directly and that's the use of the definitions. I did feel in my report that I needed to disclose that there's more than one way to skin the cat, this is not the only way, this is just the most direct and easiest way. And the planning commission picked up on that, it's the famous nevertheless in minutes. They explored that issue and in exploring that issue, the, as it was redrafted by the commission's language, it did not receive a majority vote to pass. I did not ask the commission to re-motion for a denial. Part of that, there was the two people missing, but I felt like that was just this version coming, did just not receive enough votes to pass to you. So just carry the version forward and see what the council would like to do with it. And so the recommendation from the commission is just simply the fact that they could not achieve a majority to support these changes. However, in my view, these changes do accomplish what your original directive would do, so if you so care to use this version of skinning the cat, you can pass it.
So if we use the scenario of the Hofoca property, how would this have changed anything?
That was the question that was brought up. It would change nothing on the Hofoca property.
Why, why would that not be constrained land on that?
Constrained land, in my view, you have to tie it to a physical feature of the property. And so federally regulated wetland is a physical feature of the property.
Which is not what this was, it was simply drainage channel.
It was simply the easement to preserve that their Army Corps had achieved in the past for the waters in the detention basin that we used for the storm drain. And so it's not a physical piece of property that's regulated wetlands, they simply own an easement over it. And I don't feel that you get into a whole barrage of problems that are not associated with a physical feature of the land and call it constrained, constrained by my neighbor, constrained by Rocky Mountain Power, constrained by the gas line easements. It opens up a channel that puts you at legal risk in the definition of constrained.
Would you say that you could compare it to the fact that we all have easements in our yard and if that amount of space weren't able to count as our percentage of open space, then our buildable lot area would shrink?
Correct. Because it's not a physical feature attached with the property. So 30% slopes is easy to justify, fault ruptures, easy to justify, floodplain channels, easy to justify, wetlands, easy to justify. Somebody owning an easement, regardless of who the owner is, very, not a physical constrained feature.
That's what I do like about this is that if someone owns property that just has constrained land, unbuildable land, then there's no reason to think that we should make it so that there, that land has value.
Right.
Right? So it makes sense to me.
Yeah, the debate of the discussion was is, what land you have left is very little, most of it is in the hillside overlay already. And the hillside overlay already addresses the fault rupture areas, so you can't use that constrained land, but you could still use it as a calculation of your density.
Right, so that's the protect, the greatest protection in my mind and I'm asking for your opinion if you agree with that because it's obvious in the hillside plan that we have protection that that land could not be built on, but it could be argued that it could be used in the calculation. And so then the remaining land that is buildable could be, it could be argued that it could be built at a higher density.
Right, we had, we had that discussion. I don't feel the rugby property and the stuff left inside the city boundaries have sufficient constraints to affect the outcome of the density to begin with. And so I think the issue that I talked with the commission about is we're really looking about whether we ever annex up the hillside. And up the hillside, I think is a very different animal. First of all, the question is, is would we ever do that to entertain it? The second issue that I brought up with the planning commission is, let's just say we do entertain something up there. And we agree that the middle of a canyon with steep slopes shouldn't be counted towards your gross density in its full, you know, capacity. I agree with that point. Where I think we run into problems, there's a lot of private land up there, we focus on recreation and the example I use is the Bonneville Shoreline Trail. If you want the shoreline trail to become part of a system and officially, how are you going to get that? And if you create an ordinance with a piece of property that does have a significant amount of constraints and say, you only get to develop this little teeny piece because you have to subtract out all of that and oh, by the way, we want something. And so how you handle that is not through this definition. This is the worst way in the case of handling that. Use it in cluster subdivision, transfer development rights, give them only a portion of percentage of the constrained lands. If it's, if it's this kind of constraint, you don't get the full density, you get 20% of the density. And then they can take at least some of that density, cluster it, and then they feel more comfortable about donating some property for public cause and recreation.
Let me ask you this, in that scenario though, wouldn't it be smarter to have the protection in place first and then have someone who has something like that in mind come and propose it, either through a PDO or a change in ordinance?
Well, the issue is, is will you change your annexation boundary? And you have plenty of time between the time you want to change your annexation boundary to facilitate, okay, you have a piece of property, what's its conditions like, what are the geologic hazards like? And we want a wildland fire interface zone ordinance to be passed, we want to update our geologic ordinance and we want to do a transfer of development right, or we want to do a cluster subdivision. You have plenty of opportunity between annexing property and to manage that risk.
That being said then, can you think of any properties in the city that this would apply to presently?
It, it would apply to the rigbies and that kind of vacant area that's in the hillside and you have very minimal constraints on those properties.
Any properties where it would make a difference?
Make a significant difference in my mind.
That, in that property, it would make a significant, right?
So let's say that there-
You're one unit per acre.
What about in the shorelands business park where there are wetlands issues?
There, you don't have your, you don't have your residential densities there.
And this is only applying to residential densities, it doesn't affect buildable lot areas or anything like that?
So what if there's a spring up on Rigby's property?
The, the constraint is just the issue of the hillside overlay. If it's a spring, is it open, is it a geologic hazard, is it a well, is it artesian? It, it's handled and managed under the physical constraints of the hillside ordinance and doesn't subtract the spring area out from your density. At one unit, or at four units per acre in that area, you just don't have a significant amount of density that's going to get cut for an area that's a spring because that can be absorbed into larger lot areas of backyards and so forth.
Cory, in, in theory, this would apply as well to the property on First South that the county is looking to turn into residential, but I'm guessing that-
No, that's not in the hillside.
Stream, no, I mean, just, if you pass this-
Oh, if you pass this, yeah.
But there is still so much land there that, that it really wouldn't make it-
Yeah, your geologic hazards is going to make a difference onto that.
And just engineering, I mean, just having to pass engineering stuff, right?
So this, this item is scheduled for a public hearing. Unless there are objections, I'd like to go ahead and, and open the public hearing.
Can I ask Cory one last-
Can I ask Corey one last question?
Yes.
So, your comment is, this is much ado about nothing.
I think it's a great way to address your issue. I think it's practical implementation and making a difference has very little effect. And that's what we talked about, the commission. Some of the commissioners felt like, well, at least...
We've done something.
Satisfy them in some fashion.
Thank you.
We'll go ahead and open the public hearing on the zoning code amendments around constrained land. Is there anyone who would like to speak to this issue?
Okay.
Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and turn it to the council. For further discussion, questions, or to take action?
I have one last question for Corey. So, on the Hofocca property, the piece of ground they were allowed to include for their density, but they actually couldn't plant grass. They couldn't make that an open space.
They did make it an open space. They can plant grass and use the easement area. It's a passive space. It's not an active space.
They may choose not to.
No, they have it all planted. It'll all be planted, the area of the property.
Could they put a tot lot there if they wanted to?
I don't know if the wetlands would approve. I can't say that they wouldn't, because they do do some sidewalks and boardwalk things, so they may allow something minor like that, but they weren't going to allow the dwellings to be located in their easement.
So, again, compared to our own personal lots, the question is, could we put a tot lot, or, you know, some structure in the first 10 feet of our yard, or on, right? Would that be comparable in those areas that are easements and that we...
Yeah. The density's calculated against the main use. Accessory uses, you're just open to where you can appropriate locate them. If you have a fault line, and it's an inhabitable structure, it has to have a setback. If it's, if it's just a gazebo, you can put it right on the fault line. It's just your density calculation that's affected.
Can we build a gazebo in, in our easements, in our public utility easements, in our own?
You can. Put accessory buildings in there.
Problem is, they may come in and tear them down.
But you're subject to the rights of the individual holding the easement. Small structures, they generally can trench, not trench, bore. If it's anything significant, then they may call on their easement to use it.
So, council, what would you like to do on this? And I don't think staff has a firm recommendation, one way or another.
I think that we, I at least said that I would try to do things to reduce the amount of regulation and other things that we had to worry about. And based on what I think I'm hearing, I would... Sub, I'm trying to figure out what the word is. I'm trying to come up with a second. I would propose that we not proceed on this and on this ordinance, and let it die a natural death.
You can do that by tabling, or you can vote to reject it, either one.
So, I would say table it and not put it on the schedule for the future.
So, you want a motion to reject?
Yeah. If you're trying to deny it, it's easier for us to keep records.
Yeah, rather than table it.
Than taking that ordinance, and we just put it in the book as not passed.
So, I'll motion, I'll motion to deny the ordinance.
I'll sec, I'll remove mine in seconds, George.
Hey, we have a motion to deny ordinance 2016-22, amending the Centerville zoning code regarding the definition of constrained land, developable land, and gross density. Further discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is denied. So, thank you for that. A bit of logistics. We have a, we were gonna, I was gonna consider taking number eight, waiver of protest agreement, while Corey is still here. I don't know if we have...
We told the Carlsons it would be nine o'clock.
Okay, so we'll wait, and, sorry, you gotta stick around. I'd propose we take a five-minute break.
But, but mayor, if you are in the middle of that next discussion and they show up, are you willing to intervene?
We could talk about flag lots for a long time.
Yeah.
So, if they show up, let's stop and take care of that.
Yeah.
And have that discussion. So, five-minute break. Should we kill the audio, Steve?
Reconvene our city council meeting. And Steve, given that the Carlsons are here, I'd like to go ahead and move to item number eight on the agenda, waiver of protest agreement between the city and Richard and Carol Carlson for property located there on Second North, Fairview Road and 500 East. So, Lisa, I'm not sure if you or Corey are going to provide kind of the quick overview on this.
Or Steve.
Or Steve.
Well, I could delegate.
The staff report.
Well, let me, let me start out. It was placed on the agenda by the request of a couple of council members who were contacted by the Carlsons. And then, we had a, finally had a chance yesterday as staff to meet on this and review the situation. I think you're all acquainted, you're all aware of the request, and that is that they not be required to put in sidewalk at this time on the property they're building, they're intending to build a home on. As staff, we, our preferred recommendation is that you do require the sidewalk to go in, because it is something we have been requiring on a normal basis. We have required, it has been put in a number of places in that general area of the city, which the map will show. It is a requirement of the city's standards and specifications unless a waiver is granted or a deferral agreement is approved. We acknowledge that there is no sidewalk on either side of this property that it would connect to. And we're not going to fall on our swords with that recommendation, but we believe that that, that is our preferred recommendation, because we believe that realistically, over time, a piecemeal is the way you're going to ultimately get sidewalks on some of these, on these streets. But if you are inclined to grant a waiver in this case, then we would recommend, as shown in the staff report that was added today, that it not just be a waiver of the protest right in the possible creation of a special improvement district, but that also they be required to sign a deferral agreement, so that it doesn't have to be the creation of a special improvement district that allows the city to ask them to do that. In other words, it would be a deferral agreement similar to what was approved for the butters. And it would be the city council ultimately that would make the decision someday, if that day came, to ask them to put it in, because it makes sense to do so. Then, we've recommended some other requirements there. One is that they prepare the site as they build, so that it could accommodate a sidewalk someday. We don't want them building a retaining wall in the public right-of-way, for example, or putting in trees that would be in the way of the future sidewalk, or those kind of things. And so, Lisa has drafted the agreement with those kind of conditions in place. I think it is interesting to go to the map. I'd like you to put it up there, the sidewalk status map, Jake. This was put together just in the last 24 hours since staff talked about this yesterday. Can we, we need to get more of the map there, so you're gonna have to down. Yeah, there you go. Okay. So, this, it's interesting that this is an area of the city from about 200 north to 200 south and west, east of 400 east, that had a lot of, was constrained in its development opportunities prior to the debris basin being built in Dulcreek Canyon. Because as long as that hazard zone existed, there were some pretty tough regulations to meet in order to build. We have perceived that since that was built and the floodplain was removed, or the hazard zone was removed, that there's a lot more activity, building activity in this area. And these blue lines represent sidewalks that have actually been installed in the, in recent years, in conjunction with new homes or remodeling or renovation that triggered the requirement for a sidewalk, unless there was some waiver granted. So, staff's position in recommending that we would, that they put the sidewalk in is consistent with what we have recommended in these other cases as well. Now, again, we're not, well, let me finish the explanation of the map. The white lines represent where sidewalks already exist. The blue lines representing more recent sidewalk construction in connection with new construction or renovation. And then, what's the other color?
Yellow.
Yellow represents...
The deferral.
Where we do have some deferral agreements in that area. Now, there aren't a whole lot within the scope of this map, but there are, to the west in the old town part of the city, I think there's some deferral agreements. We have over 40 deferral agreements in the city right now. And I anticipate you're going to have a policy discussion later this year, after you see the sidewalk analysis. It'll provide a foundation for you to then discuss, all right, do we want to require sidewalks everywhere in the city as a general policy? Are there some areas where we, we want to say, hey, we don't foresee the possibility of needing them in this area, so we're going to geographically zone those out, or however we deal with it. But absent that, then, we think you either ought to require the sidewalks, or you ought to require the deferral agreement and the related conditions that Lisa has put with that. That's our position as staff.
Thank you. So, the, before we move forward on this, or turn to the council discussion, I wanted to offer the applicant the chance to speak or say anything, if you'd like to. You don't have to, but if you'd like to say anything, we welcome your comments before I'll turn it to the council for discussion. Please, come to the microphone, and if you don't mind stating your name for the record, so we have it on the recording later.
And mayor, just, excuse me, just a moment. I'm going to hand down the copy, a hard copy of what was just shown on the screen.
Yep.
Please.
Can you hear me? I'm Carol Carlson, here with my husband Rick and our son Wade, here for moral support. Appreciate that. Don't know how much to explain. I do, I have one question really about what you were explaining about the additional conditions. I understand the deferral agreement, the waiver protest agreement, but when you spoke about the city just requiring at some later date without specifics, that just, they would just...
Well, the deferral agreement is a, is a...
Without a special improvement district?
Right, right. It's in the same section of the code as the section that you are relying on for your request, that a council may allow street improvements to be delayed by, but, by offering a deferral agreement instead. It's a discretionary decision of the council. We believe as staff that the ordinance was probably intended primarily for situations where there, that may not even have been curb and gutter, but it has been used for, just where there's no sidewalk. There is curb and gutter and street improvements, but there's no sidewalk. So, we have over 40 deferral agreements that have been approved throughout the city where the sidewalks were allowed not to go in. But the deferral agreement allows the city, at some future point, to call upon that and say, it's time for you to put it in, because it makes sense for, to the governing authorities that it ought to go in at that time.
So, the city is probably not going to call upon you if you're the only one on your street or anywhere around to put it in.
Okay, that's what I...
But, but a special improvement district means that everybody has to vote for it. Chances of getting people to vote to pay to put a sidewalk in aren't very good, so they probably wouldn't use a special. And if they decide, if a future city council decides that you need sidewalks in your neighborhood, they're going to come and say, we want sidewalks on, on all of the properties. And they can do that.
They wouldn't just specifically say...
They wouldn't just pick one, no, they're not just going to pick one side. I can't say, because I won't be on it, but I wouldn't, wouldn't logically think that they're going to pick one house and say, oh, would you please put sidewalks in? It's going to be, we've decided to do the U shape, or maybe we've decided it needs to go straight up on the one side of your lot, and so, you may just need to put it up. You know, if they decided that they were going to do that whole street, because you do have undeveloped property across from you. So, that may come in as a sub, you know, a subdivision or what. And if they decided at that point in time they wanted the sidewalks to go all the way up, then they could come to you and say. But they're going to do it for a reason. They're not just going to pick your name out of a hat and decide you need to put sidewalk in. And in all honesty, if you didn't have the deferral agreement, they'd probably tell you you had to put it in anyway.
At that time, okay.
Isn't that true, Mayor?
Well, if we have, the deferral agreement makes it a lot cleaner.
Easier, easier, right. But we may, their neighbors may be told, they don't have a deferral agreement, that they need sidewalks someday.
Well, Lisa, you may want to comment on that.
That's a harder, that's a harder process.
Staff's position is that with new development, the code requires all public improvements be installed by the developer. That's our code. But then, our code also says, but there might be some circumstances where that doesn't make sense, and it should be deferred. So, there are certain trigger points when that can be required. So, that's why staff is recommending, if you are going to allow this waiver of protest, we're recommending that a condition of that approval is that they enter into a deferral agreement, because that, in my opinion, is one of the only hooks at this point, because the trigger point is that they're developing the property. There won't be another requirement unless they remodel or they tear it down. So, that's why it's critical that the deferral agreement is entered into, to make sure that it's equitable with the way we treat all other developers. It may make sense, if you believe from a policy standpoint it makes sense to defer it, then that's staff's recommendation. And so, just to clarify, we couldn't just, without the deferral agreement, we couldn't just say in five years, put in the sidewalk. There would be no contractual obligation.
Unless there was a special improvement district created in which at least, you know, half, a majority of the property owners supported it, or a majority didn't oppose it. If it was proposed to be created and you had less than half oppose it, the city could go forward with the creation of a special improvement district. But I, I don't think you ought to rely on that tool. I think you need to secure a more effective tool that you can use if you, in your judgment, someday that it makes sense to put it in.
So, do I understand this correctly? There would be two agreements we would enter into?
Well, Lisa, do you want to comment on that?
Protest agreement?
Yeah, the...
And a deferral agreement?
Staff's recommendation is that we just do one agreement. It's going to, we'll just call it a deferral agreement, and it'll have a clause in that deferral agreement that they also agree to waive any protest of a special improvement district if it's ever proposed for this area.
Yeah.
Kind of like, we just go yes, no matter what.
Right.
Okay. I understand that, huh? Okay.
And, I mean, it's pretty common right now with many of our homes that are being, we have areas that are being torn down or built up to require a sidewalk, even if the neighbors don't have it. This area has fewer sidewalks than many of the areas where we do require it. And while we don't call on all the deferral agreements, we did call on one this year.
Right.
Where, where they were building a sidewalk along the frontage road. It was connecting another subdivision. We had that in place, so we said, when it comes past your house, you need to pay for the sidewalk. And the homeowner was happy to do it. He, it benefited him long-term, and he knew it was coming, because when he built the house years ago, he had, he had agreed to it, so...
That's how she feels, too.
Sorry, he can't, he'd be up here, but he can't stand that long. So, here I am. Our view on it is, if you've seen the property and that whole neighborhood, it is mostly older homes, and there's gutter, and some of them have curb, some just have the gutter. And we feel that the sidewalk there, especially where it's a corner lot, it's a, you know, big distance, it's just going to look plain silly. And it, it just makes no sense to us at all to require that to be put in at this time. And we are very happy to, when the rest of the neighborhood puts sidewalk in, we feel that would be the appropriate time to do that. And so, yeah, we had discussed the deferral option and feel that that's a good option for us in this case, and it would be appropriate for the neighborhood. for us in this case, and it would be appropriate for the neighborhood.
So Lisa, can you comment on any constraints included in the deferral agreement, such as, hey, you know, we don't want you to plant trees where the sidewalk would go, and any other constraints that are in that agreement?
Well, these are also recommendations in the staff report. The staff report went out today, just because this was put on at the last minute, but some of the requirements that staff is recommending is, as part of the building permit, as well as the agreement, is that the site needs to be developed as if the sidewalks were going in. So Jake, if you could bring up a picture of the property, there's a slope to it. So maybe the other, there's one other photo.
Yes.
That, that shows a little more slope. So what, what we don't want, the, yeah, so there. So you don't want the property owner to bring that, see how they're cutting out the land? If they cut that all the way out to the curb, there'd be, it'd be very difficult at a future point to put in a sidewalk. So staff's recommendation is put in eight, a four-foot park strip and a eight-foot, or four-foot space for the sidewalk, so it'll be eight feet of flat, and then enough space to hold that, so you can't start your slope right there. You go back a few feet, so that in the future, when we do demand, or if, a sidewalk, it'll be easy to install. This is due to experience with some other ones where we've realized to put a sidewalk in, you'd actually have to put in a retaining wall, or take out a retaining wall. So a lot of improvements are going in our public right-of-way that really shouldn't be. So that's just one of the conditions that we're requesting, that it be graded and designed in such a way that when, if and when a sidewalk has to go in, it can. So that was.
I, I might note to illustrate what she's saying, that in the Butters case, we will be, we are requiring, we have required, even though they get a deferral agreement, that the driveway, which they, they'll be modifying the driveway, so that the lower end of the driveway is built such that it will blend with the sidewalk in the future.
A future sidewalk, yeah.
And so at what point, that, is there a check for that? Is that, is the landscaping elevations and that sort of thing included in building permit state?
So what we're proposing is to put a clause in the agreement that contractually says, yes, as, as part of your building permit plans and your site plan that the city engineer will review, you'll put that in. And then the city engineer will know that's in this and, and check for it.
Perfect. Okay. And our plans really for the landscaping.
Design that way.
Perfect. We, we had the top, topographical survey done, and the house will sit much like the one that you can see there, that will be to the side of it. The front lawn will just go directly back into the house. Side will just follow pretty much as it is. And I think that's drawn on the plan. On the north side of the house, between the two homes, there will maybe be a few rocks to control the slope, so that the water doesn't just run into our home. But we don't anticipate that problem on the south side of the house as the ground falls away to the south.
So all of that will be reviewed with the building permit? And then staff's also recommending that the vegetation in that eight-foot area be limited to sod, or, you know, so we don't want tall bushes in the public right-of-way there.
And we agree, we will, our choice is to sod to the curb.
Agreed.
We don't. And it's a corner lot, so it makes no sense to put trees out there to block the view of traffic. I just, that's.
You're, you're thinking ahead for other people, we appreciate that.
I'm a detailed person. I've thought long and hard about all of this.
We appreciate that a lot.
Thank you.
So I'm, I'm in complete support of a deferral agreement. The one thing I'd like to see changing in, in our deferral agreements is the minimum activation time. We have a ninety-day window from the demand of the city. I think that's too short. I think that should really be around a hundred and eighty days. I'd like it even longer, because it's, it is a financial impact for the homeowner to, to be called upon to do that. And, you know, an unanticipated expense with a three-month window to come up with several thousand dollars to put in curb gutter and sidewalk is, that's a pretty big gotcha, I think, for a homeowner. So I'd like to see that period increased, at least to a hundred and eighty days.
Let me illustrate the potential problem with that, and that is, we, the frontage road, you know, if you get a grant, and I don't know, you, you may have a window of opportunity with that grant that requires you to get action within the building, within the first construction season, which might require the three months. I mean, as I mentioned earlier, in response to, I think Stephanie's comment, you as the council are gonna be the ones deciding whether to call on the, the deferral agreement, and you can make an adjustment at that time based on the circumstances. I have, I have no objection to it being longer if it can be accommodated, but if you put it in at a hundred and eighty days, without an ability of shortening it, you may, you may find yourself sorry you did that someday.
And Steve, I was, I was thinking that it, for one agreement in the past, we had some payment terms, or we made some.
Thank you, I was gonna mention that as well.
Accommodations to, to somebody who wanted to pay over time.
It was the, the recent case you mentioned on the frontage road. We gave them a year to pay it on a monthly basis with their water bill added that.
Well, I would prefer to see that as a standard clause in there. I mean, I just really don't want a homeowner to have to escrow money away in anticipation of, at some future date, something may happen. I mean, it would be obvious if their neighbors suddenly sidewalks start to appear, that something's coming down the pike, as far as that goes. But I really, as a homeowner myself, I would not wanna have a ninety-day window hanging over me that I have to come up with a lot of money. So I think even adding the other option makes, makes me feel better. If I were on the other end of this contract, I'd, I'd want that, that amount of protection.
And one thing, in our case, I mean, we are at the corner, we would have a long run of sidewalk to put in now or then.
That's, that's why I'm looking at it for that as well, cause this is not, this is not a trivial expense. And so I, from my perspective, I would prefer to give as much reasonable notice as possible. I mean, the obligation still exists, but at least it was not blindsided, hey, come up with six to eight thousand dollars in, in three months, or you'll be in violation of your agreement with the city.
From staff's perspective, if we change the ordinance to give a hundred and eighty days, then basically, the city could do what it's doing anyway, which is work with people and give, in essence, a loan, cause the city pays for what needs to happen immediately, right? And then that person pays the city back. So I'm just wondering, staff's opinion, do you have a problem with that? Because I agree with George that it's nice to protect the homeowner. Maybe there's a council who doesn't, you know, recognize the potential burden and just passes.
Might not always have a great council like us, something.
So you're saying, I'm not sure I understand, you're saying a hundred and eighty days, but if the ci, city wants to act sooner, they just have to upfront the money and then collect it from the homeowner?
Yeah, I mean.
Within a hundred and eighty days?
The agreement still says that the owner will be responsible for the payments, but it gives them more time to.
Well, it also, the agreement actually gives the city a choice to say, look, the city can put it in and demand payment reimbursement from the homeowner, or the city can tell the homeowner to put it in. Now typically, at least on the frontage road one, we were doing it in conjunction with a project, and the homeowner said, yes, please do it, we'll pay you back. So yes, we're already upfronting the money, and I know our public works director, you know, made some comment on that, that we're putting it in and providing a, a free loan, so.
I think we're just trying to put some protection in for them, for when we're not the ones that are here making the decision.
Well, it, you know, if you'd like to go to the hundred and eighty days.
I think a hundred and eighty, a hundred and eighty days with the city's option to exercise early with, you know, a repayment, that does not take place until day one eighty-one. So, I mean, if we do it that way, that's at least, I think that's, that's a pretty reasonable noticing period, and, but it does not require a homeowner to keep a large escrow of cash around at, for anticipation. I'd rather have six months' notice than three on anything that requires several thousand dollars.
So can we just do the hundred and eighty days, or were you talking about some other?
I, I think we should add the, the language for, or if the city exercises the option to, to put it in early, that they offer repayment terms to, you know, I'm, I'm throwing this out, Lisa, we're gonna have to.
And I'm not sure finance would love that, it's not a simple thing, and, I mean, this is, these deferral agreements take a lot of staff time, a lot of city resources, I mean, just drafting the agreement, debating the agreement, and then calling on them. We have to provide, we have to track all of them.
Right.
Provide the notice. So I, I guess my recommendation is just, as a compromise, going to the hundred and eighty days rather than offering upfront the, the payment terms. You know, we can work with them, but I'm not sure I wanna contractually bind us to that. It is difficult.
Hundred and eighty days is, is a very long time, and that's, that's more than, often you can miss the construction season, which.
So we're gonna be tracking these a year in advance now.
We wanna protect, we wanna protect Carlson's rights, but, but what about the other taxpayers who are subsidizing that?
Right.
And, and if it costs more to delay the project?
Well, I think that's why George said what he did, was that it retains the city's opportunity to do it sooner, without requiring the homeowner to have it upfront within the ninety days.
So.
Okay, so if, if the city exercises the option to put it in on its own.
Sooner than the hundred and eighty day notice.
Okay, then what?
Then, then that's when we would say, we're not going to require them to pay the full thing up, up front, when we haven't given a hundred and eighty day notice.
So the, yeah.
Okay, okay.
The intent would be is if you build.
But they still have to pay the hundred.
Yeah, you still have to pay it.
I got it.
But if, if the city decides month one, because we're in the construction season, that we're putting it in, the homeowner still doesn't come up with the money until day one eighty-one for the portion that they would've paid on day one eighty-one if they'd gotten their own contractor.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that's, I think that's workable, yeah.
I'd like to see that as a standard going forward, because it just, you know, I, I read a statistic just the other day that says fifty percent of Americans cannot come up with the money to cover an emergency expense of one thousand dollars. So if you look at, you know, large expenses even greater than that, I think we need to be protecting homeowners as much as we can.
Okay. I misunderstood, I thought you were trying to put in a payment.
No, 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 no.
So this, no, I totally agree with this, it's a good suggestion. And I will try to track that for all our, for the standard agreement.
So if the council's inclined to approve this, or approve a waiver of protest and a deferral agreement, subject to the, I'd recommend that you do it subject to the conditions that Lisa has put in the staff report, and authorize Lisa to make any minor, negotiate any minor changes, and authorize the mayor to sign it, so we don't have to come back to the council for any small issues and, and delay the applicant any further.
With, with the revision that has been recommended.
Yeah, with the one hundred and eighty day revision as.
Right, so I haven't actually drafted the agreement, I wanted to wait to see what the council decided, and, but the staff report recommends that you just direct staff to draft the standard agreement based upon these conditions and your additional one, and then authorize the mayor to sign it. And I think that will be swifter for the property owner who probably wants to get a building permit, so.
Otherwise, we have to bring it back to the council.
Right, if we can't agree, then we'll bring it back to you.
Second.
We moved and seconded over here. Oh, I was just working on it.
So we have a motion to approve a waiver of protest request for the deferral of sidewalk improvements for the property, subject to the conditions listed in the staff report with the modifications suggested of up to a hundred and eighty days to, to pay, and authorization to, to make any minor.
A hundred and eighty days notice.
A hundred and eighty days.
That's what you meant, and, yeah.
A hundred and eighty days notice. But a, as discussed previously. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Like your.
That is true, that is true.
Happy building.
And I just wanna say too, that I am glad that you as Centerville citizens would search out all of your options, rather than just get angry and say, the city told me I have to build a sidewalk, and I'm gonna build it, but then I'm gonna be bitter the rest of my life. So.
We're just not that kind of people.
Good on ya.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thanks, guys.
Good to see ya.
All right, Cory is still hanging around to discuss item number six. Accessory building setbacks and flag lot ordinance amendments. So.
Before we move into that, I'm gonna just throw one quick item out, in the sense Cory's still here, cause we're gonna have this discussion, but in recognition of what we just did with the planning commission in terms of the work session, I think the one thing that we didn't come out of there with was a clear direction as to how we were gonna proceed, and I would, I would motion that we go ahead and notice for a fourteen-day period to make an amendment to the, the public space plan, to adopt Robin's four-foot grass parking strip and a six-foot wide sidewalk, and remove the other elements.
So the planning commission, okay, that's not on our.
It's not on our agenda, but we need to move it forward so that they can, I mean, we need a fourteen-day notice on it. So I'm just saying that we have a staff direction to notice that.
And the planning commission requested, at the end of the meeting, to, to continue this discussion. You're, you're rejecting that request and.
And meet with them again to, to discuss new ideas and get feedback from them.
I know what I wanna do.
No, I'm, I'm just saying that the current elements don't work for me, so I'm saying, I, here's some elements from Robin to work. We can also take the stirring the pot option from Cory. I'm, I'm just saying that I'd like to get that on the calendar for a public hearing.
Okay, so.
I'm in favor of that.
George has motioned, and Stephanie has seconded the, I need to put this on the agenda for a public hearing, the public space plan on August second, without.
Can't do it on August second, cause we can't meet the fourteen-day requirement.
So this would be the second meeting.
Is it a fourteen-day requirement?
No, this is the, just a zoning text amendment, so I think we've reduced that to the, I'll have to check my matrix.
Ten, ten days is what Cory is saying.
Why don't you make a motion, well, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, next available agenda, that's good.
I, I appreciate, I appreciate the council's efforts to move this forward. I think, you know, if you looked at the volume of effort that the planning commission put into this, they put a significant amount of effort into it. And.
I think it would be the respectful thing to do, to come back with, I, I didn't hear Robin suggest that, and so you're shocking me with your statement, and so a more clear.
It was in the planning, the work meeting?
Well, I understand that that's what's being said, but, so a mayor, a more clear communication. I mean, the hours and hours, the professional consulting, the graphics, the visuals, that one plan was presented with, the data, the public input, the numerous letters of support versus no public input of rejection of the idea, to then just say, we wanna move forward with something that's very, very different from that. I think that to be respectful to the process, we would need to see visuals, we would need to see a list of findings and reasons, things to study in advance, and things to take back to the planning commission and have a respectful discussion, and say, this is what, that some of this council's leaning towards, please give us your feedback on that, and, and what you, what your thoughts are, as our citizen land use planners.
I, I just need a procedure issue, so that we make sure we're square with the noticing. Planning commission sent you a recommendation, so what I think is on the table, you get to decide how you wanna proceed it, but what I think is on the table is, is what should be in the notices, that you're gonna receive the planning commission's recommendation, and you're proposing an alternative to be considered, and allow the public hearing to be conducted on those issues and those matters together, and then you can decide which way you're gonna go with the options. Is that?
That's perfectly articulated. That's exactly what I'm looking for. So in, in that way, because what you're saying, Tammy, has, has value in that we still need to find out, you know, did we go too far the other direction? But we have some commissioners who are fine with recognizing that this is a high-speed thoroughfare, not a walking district. And so there are, there are two sides to that one, so I would, I would put that out there, and then with the public noticing, we can, we can bring people forward and see if there are strong feelings, one way or another. But from what I was hearing Robin say earlier, that sounded like the baseline, and then we can move up or down from, not down, that's probably the, the absolute baseline, but we can move up from there, based on additional input. But as, as you pointed out before, we have to have something in place that constrains a developer to develop to a standard, so if, if the commissioners who believe that it is a thoroughfare and not a walking district are right, then this alternative puts that in place to do that. So it's really, that, that's what I wanted to look at it from that direction.
I, I believe, or what I heard from the planning commissioners is, is a willingness to discuss and, and work with you on this. What, what I'd prefer not to see is the city council just rejecting work of, of planning commission and saying, this is what we're going to do without your, your input. So if, if you are open to the.
Well, but the converse is that the, the planning commission rejected what we said, what we thought was the correct answer. I mean, you have two bodies that are in, in disagreement about what the midpoint is. So I don't, I don't see why it's any different.
Yeah, and what I hear respectfully, George, is that, and maybe I'm hearing this wrong, is that we're gonna move forward with our position not, not work to see if we can come up with a compromise that, that maybe meets somewhere in between.
Well, as, as Cory helped articulate it, if we're putting this on there for public notice and saying, "This is the alternative," then we can at least take in public comment relative to an alternative. But an alternative hasn't been suggested by the planning commission yet, so by throwing out the alternative, bringing it out for a public, public meeting, I think we're, we're meeting that obligation. But, you know, and respectful to the planning commission, if they reject what we've put down and said, "This is what we want to see removed from the elements of the plan," which they did, the recommendation was to leave those elements, that's not any different to me.
But I, I did hear people on the planning commission say, "Oh, okay, well, yeah, I don't like the grasses either, or we could change it to something else, you know, let's talk about the details of it, do we want to put grass instead of concrete where there's not a vertical element?" The other thing that I heard that I think is very important that I want to make clear is I heard Robin's point, that the business owners, the property owners, have not been thoroughly brought into this process, and I just want to talk about the process for a minute. This got done quickly as part of the umbrella of the TZRO, because I've been working on Main Street plan stuff for many, many, many years, and the public space plan was always intended to follow the land use plan and to be in place. And the reason that it wasn't is Main Street in general got to be too hot out of a topic because light, the light rail controversy got embroiled in it. So the politicians just didn't want to deal with Main Street, they set it aside, they didn't want to deal with the public space plan. We had the opportunity with the TZRO in place to get some protective basic plan in place, so that we could have wider sidewalks, we could have some of these improvements that were considered important by many, over all those years of work with the Main Street plan. It was not that it needed to be the be-all, end-all plan, it did happen quickly. My desire was always to have a much more thorough planning process, an envisioning process that included Main Street neighbors, that included those property owners. And so rather than going from what I can understand the council is saying was an extreme in your mind, to the other extreme, I would propose that we involve the community, the, the people who live in this area, the people who own property on Main Street, and have that kind of sit down at a work table and envisioning process.
And I, I see what you're saying, I, I would state that a Cadillac and a Yugo will both get you to the grocery store. We've seen the Cadillac, I'm proposing a Yugo. If somebody wants to say, "I'd like to land somewhere in between a Buick," that's fine, but we don't, we have not offered an alternative that is the absolute baseline. And quite frankly, Tammy, people will probably go, "That's ugly," and they'll come in and they'll talk about it. But what we have right now is we have kind of an amorphous plan of, "Well, we're, we're going to discuss this," but there's nothing out there that's really going, from my perspective right now, that's going to incentivize the public to come in and talk about it. Yes, I, I would say this is on the other extreme, and, but it will at least stimulate the conversation to what the happy medium is in between. So, I, I still think we should, we should put that on, on public noticing.
It's a ten-day notice, so we did amend that so that, if there was something on the planning commission, so, and it's only a Utah Public Notice website and the city website. So I was looking for the notice when Cory made his comment, so I might be duplicating this, but basically we have a recommendation from the planning commission, so we can schedule this. I mean, we debated whether we should schedule this as a business item tonight, you know, so you could have the work session and then this, but we thought, "Well, let's, let the planning commission, and you can think about it, and then, then schedule it." So it could be scheduled for the next meeting for a public hearing, but essentially that's on the planning commission's recommendation with your original directive, which was eliminate some of these elements. So I guess my advice would be, schedule it, hold the public hearing, and then have this debate that you're having, direct staff to rewrite it, and this is probably what Cory just said, and then you can come back and have your public hearing on that. Or you can table it and say, "We want to talk with the planning commission," but, you know, a lot of this is substantive debate, that we really should just schedule it for the next meeting and have a public hearing on that, and probably table it again.
And that's what I would prefer to do, and as far as an artist rendering, I'm sure Cory could do a green block and a gray block, it's, I don't think we need to go out and spend a lot of effort or money on that, on that, but I, I think that we need to, we need to bring this forward, and it needs to be on the next agenda.
So we have a, I really like that.
I do too.
Is your intent to take action on the next agenda, or to?
No.
No, it's a public hearing.
So that we're, we're just trying to move.
Well, we can list it, I mean, we always list it as a public hearing and an action item, unless you're saying we don't want to, but I think.
No, that's fine, I think we could, but we're just trying to move on, so that we can get now the public input, and then we can decide middle of the road, what we want and how we want to do it. We don't have to decide that, that night, but we need to get the public hearing. Right now, the planning commission has spent hundreds of hours going through this. They've told us why and what they came up with. So what's the next step? I mean, another meeting like we just had isn't going to do us any good. We need to get some public hearing, we need to hear what the landowners say, and then we need to come up with a plan, and then we need to vote on it.
So we have a motion on the table to schedule a public hearing and, and compare plans as discussed, any further discussion?
What clarification, and compare plans as discussed? I, I've, I'm hearing two things here, let me just see if what I'm hearing is correct, what I'm perceiving. You, you have a public hearing in the next, next meeting, on the recommendations from the planning commission. I anticipate that you will not support those, and you will direct, you, you will then agree upon a, on a extension of the process.
No, not at all.
The, the next public hearing would be to display a public space plan that contains none of the elements, but a four-foot wide park strip and a six-foot wide sidewalk.
Steve, you are representing what I'm recommending. Because I, we're really out of the process here, by taking a motion on what you want, like when you're saying, "We want green here," you're actually taking action, directing staff to do something that we haven't really scheduled on this agenda, and so that's why I'm recommending you direct staff at the next meeting after hearing the public comment.
So to move forward, what we need to do is take public hearing on what the planning commission, and then if we have people coming in, and we talk about it, and we decide that's not what we want, but we think we'd like this, then Cory can come up with the plan that we like, but we're moving, we're going to get this done and over with.
Yeah, yeah, we moved too far into the debate, I really just want it on the calendar, so we can talk about it. And I, I stated what the intent was, just so that when the planning commission goes, "What are they doing?", they know exactly what we're doing, so they have time to prepare.
And it might be that you present that, but my concern is trying to prepare a staff report on, and, and analysis of what you're just directing tonight on the new design, and there's just not time for that.
It, it, no, and I'm not looking to that, but I do want to at least have the, that's why I threw it out there, what the baseline was from Robin's idea, so that.
Well, it's good to know the direction you're thinking.
Yeah, I don't want it to be a surprise, and we get there, and the planning commission's scratching their heads, wondering what is the other end of the scale that the council's potentially considering, so that's why.
Well, and it shouldn't be, because we already told them what it was, and that's what they talked about and decided they didn't like, and came back and gave the other one.
True, that was your majority direction to the planning.
So it shouldn't be a shock.
Well, I don't know, Paul seems quite shocked by it, so I'm just, I'm just curious. No, that was a face of shock, so I'm just trying to figure out what, what's the event that's, you know.
We tried to change this, we didn't even realize it had to go to the planning commission.
Right.
And so we went to the planning commission, so they already knew that we were trying to change it. Great on this idea, but it went back to them, now they're giving it back to us, now we've got to do something to move on.
Right, I, I'm just surprised that, I support your efforts to move on, it, it seems like you're not as interested in, in what residents.
That's why we want a public hearing.
Have gone through the process to put things in, but you've, you've got a notion of what you want, but.
Yeah, I think, I think that's a mischaracterization, we're not, we're not disrespecting the, the planning commission, or the, the other bodies involved in, in this process. What we're saying is, is that we'd like to look at this other option, and let's get the, the citizen feedback to go with it, because if the business owners don't know, and the public space planning is going to ultimately impact them, and all these people who want to walk up the neighborhood, I'd like to hear about that, from them. That's why I want to get it on the next agenda.
I, I'm, I'm fine with this, which is a little different than Steve and Lisa, I know where Steve and Lisa are coming from. I think it's fine to notice it, because you have, you have a right to modify the commission's recommendation. And so I want to give you the open door to understand to the public and communicate that you are considering the planning commission's recommendation. We know that there's a little bit of, maybe not full agreement with that at this point in the time, but that final decision hasn't been made, but it's clear that it's, that, you know, we're going to try to work through those issues. But I think you can also, you can also show your intent to look at modification of the commission's recommendation. You know, how far do we disclose that? Because I know, as soon as you, if you went down the road and said, "Public hearing, everything, we've decided, we're rejecting the planning commission's recommendation," your rejection leaves in place what's already there, if you see, if you follow the logic.
Yeah.
And what you're saying is, is, "I want to be able to notice for the potential modification of that."
Well, but remember, you're original, so I have to draft an ordinance. If you actually want to take action, you can't take action without an ord, a written ordinance in place, so I have to draft an ordinance. I was planning on drafting the ordinance.
After next meeting.
Two ones, well, I mean, I could, if, if you just don't want it to be an action item, then there won't be an ordinance, and that would make my job easier, but what I was seeing, you know, you could do a planning commission, well, the planning commission's recommendation is, is no ordinance, your recommendation is what was originally in, in Cory's staff report, which is taking out the language about the benches. That would be the red line draft that, that's debated. I mean, they did make a motion to amend section one eighty as follows, and we have a red line draft that the planning commission reviewed in February, so that could be the ordinance, or if, if you want to just say, "No action," just schedule it for a public hearing, and then you'll direct staff how to draft it.
Well, in deference to what Bill likes to do, and I agree, is I would prefer to have the public meeting and then action on the next, the next meeting, rather than the same calendar meeting.
Great.
Was that what you were going to say, Bill?
And that's easier, because then we're not.
No, that's not what I was going to say, but I do absolutely agree with that.
Yeah.
I, part of, part of the issue here, and I don't want to, I didn't say much during the work meeting, because my comments were going to be rude, well, I don't know, potentially considered rude by someone. I, I think there has been a lot of politicking and lobbying towards what came out of the planning commission, and a lot of emails, and a lot of targeted emails, trying to develop what we got. There's been a lot of conversation by other people on the council, talking to other residents in the community, who didn't come to the planning commission and didn't get involved in the process, shame on them. The result is, Shay Lynn's comment, gee, I just couldn't believe how much information, how, how much sympathy and support there was for this proposal. Well, there was a fair, there was a significant amount, and I got a ton of emails, and actually have made the comment that I feel like I was the target of a marketing campaign, to convince me that that's what we needed to want. But at the same point in time, I've been talking to other people who are very, very against it, and they range from, "Hey, we're fine the way we are right now, leave it alone," to, "Yeah, a five or six-foot sidewalk might be nice, but we can't really require people to pay for that, because that's really expensive and tough, and people lose a lot of property." And so where, where I think George is coming from, and where we agree, is, I mean, there's a lot of people who feel that we're, I don't want to be rude, but perfuming a pig. We're getting something that doesn't give us anything at the end of the day, and would like it dramatically scaled back. And so there's the two proposals, what the planning commission has given us, and something that's substantially scaled back. And yeah, we have a public hearing to see, are there fifteen, eighteen people that only show up, and everybody wants what the planning commission has proposed, or, or are we going to have fifty people, fifteen who are one way and thirty-five who are another? And that's what I think may happen. So that's the reason that I, I, that I'm in agreement with what you're saying, George, and that I think gets us to the point that you're talking about. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it makes sense. Now, the question is, is it clear to everyone else what, what we're looking to do?
Not to me, as far as, as far as what, as to how we, how we characterize the next meeting. Lisa, do you want to, or Cory, you want to take a stab at what you think this means?
Well, what I've heard is to schedule it for a public hearing on August second, if we can meet the noticing, which means we need to get with the city recorder tomorrow, so just saying if we can.
Right.
We'll do it for the August second, for consideration and discussion of the South Main Street edits to the public space plan, with no action proposed. So I'm not going to draft an ordinance, so that you can hold the public hearing, have some discussion, and then make a motion with, with all of this great debate, of the pros and cons of the plan, and a majority vote on direction to staff of what to come back with. And we would recommend that you continue the public hearing, because you'll be bringing up a new design, a new ordinance, and then have another public hearing on that.
Think that would work. The only thing that could potentially expedite the commenting from, from the public would be just a simple graphic that says, "If this becomes envisioned as an ordinance, it's going to look like this," with, you know, park strip sidewalk, that, that's, you know, that's.
If you're idea. And that might be something that you just say, "Staff, can you present a graphic, so that at the meeting, when I'm giving my comment on what I want it to look like, we can put that up?" Yeah, I just like that, because if you wanted to say, "Staff, we want you to put that option in the staff report," you would have to have a majority vote right now to direct staff that that's the policy direction, that's what I'm concerned about, is.
I'm fine with a majority vote, I think I've heard a, a majority that way.
Right.
I, I, I'm more comfortable going into a public hearing, saying to the public, "We've got this plan that a few of you have said you like, and that a lot of people have said they didn't like, but they didn't come and say it in public, and then we've got this bare bones plan, come talk to us, see them both, and see if that riles up the people, so that they come and tell us what they really want." Because what I really want to pass is what they really want, not what a couple of people said, and then I went with it. So if there's some way to tell the public, "We're looking at this," that's what the planning commission has given us, and we're looking at this, which was what we thought we heard from the last round of things, and they can see them both, does that make sense? But Lisa's point is procedural, procedural, so why don't we just, we're, we're already very much overboard in depth discussing this, and it wasn't even on the agenda, it was like a miscellaneous item that George brought up. So my, my point is that what was on the table for earlier tonight in a work session, which is different than being on the actual agenda, was to have a sit-down and talk it out with the planning commission. And so then the next step would be to ta, take the ordinance that we already have written, we can, and we can discuss both the original ordinance and the red line edit, based on January's request, and then have a public hearing and a just further discussion on those. Procedurally, that's what makes the most sense. And then we can say, you know, the public at that point will be able to hear the ideas that come out of the discussion, and know that the public hearing is kept open, and there will be another chance to come again.
So we have a motion on the table that I think is a bit of a challenge for, for staff. What Lisa suggested, I'm, I'm very comfortable with, in terms of, if you want to prepare some graphics, or staff to prepare graphics to show a point as a comment, great, if you're asking to prepare an ordinance, that's pretty tough.
It would, it would not be appropriate to prepare an ordinance, simply because I'm, you know, stating right now that if we have a public hearing with an ordinance together, that's a vote in one night, this council's already expressed a desire not to do that. So I, I wouldn't want Lisa to spend the, the effort to write an ordinance, but with no intent of having it being acted on that same night, that just, that's, that's a lot of jumping through hoops, but I think it would be appropriate in that public hearing to demonstrate what the ordinance, you know, the, the envisionment of the ordinance is going to be this, and that can be in the staff report, that's fine. But at least that, that starts the, the conversation going. But yeah, I was hoping this would be like a two-minute thing.
Well, we'll just let George make, make the motion, and we'll, we'll follow that.
He did, and I seconded.
Oh, okay.
So the, the, the challenge was that, as I understood the motion, it was to prepare an alternate plan for consideration, and I think that, that's the challenge that I saw.
Okay.
So if, if you want.
Do you want to restate?
Restate and clarify that.
All right, so we'll restate the motion as, as a direction to staff to prepare graphics that will encompass an alternate plan for the South Main Street corridor, open space planning, that will encompass a four-foot wide park strip and a six-foot wide sidewalk.
But the, the main purpose of the public hearing is to review the planning commission's recommendation, and take public comment on that.
Review and compare. Review and compare.
Not, not, not a public comment on your, your plan, which hasn't gone through any other process.
Our plan did go through the process. We sent it to the planning commission, they spent six months on it, they said, "We have a different idea," but we already gave it to them. It has been through the process.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not saying. Yeah, and I'm not, I'm not saying that the coun- the council did give a directive, and like I said, if I were to prepare an ordinance for this, as I was saying, because I thought it was going to be on the agenda tonight, I was just going to draft what you had recommended to the planning commission and said, "Comment on this," because the planning commission didn't give you a recommendation at all. So I was just going to draft that, taking out benches references. So, but now that it's back to the city council with no recommendation from the planning commission, you do have the authority to change it. And, and so, and I think that's where, where Cory's saying, yes, we can add these, and, you know, if you want a graphic in there, we'll, we'll present it. It's, it's just problematic. I mean, from a practical standpoint, getting information out to the public in ten days, you know, but we'll, we'll provide that and put it on the agenda. But it's basically going to be on the agenda for discussion of the South Main Street plan, proposed zoning code amendments, discussion only if, if that's with, with the public hearing, public hearing and discussion.
Yeah.
All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye, it's fine to put it on the agenda for next time.
Is that a vote against?
Aye.
It was unanimous.
Unanimous to put on the agenda for next time.
Okay, that passes unanimously. So the, our agenda item, Cory, was to talk about flag lots and accessory buildings. If we want to go back to that one, if the council wants to take it.
You certainly have the option to table this if you like.
That sounds really good right now. It is ten minutes to table.
I've already projected eleven, so.
We still have a couple of other items. So is there a motion to table the discussion of accessory building setbacks and flag lot ordinance amendments, and when do you want to table it, too?
Is two weeks any lighter?
Not, not anymore.
It's going to say, "Won't fit in the next one."
The second, what's the second week, the second meeting in August looking like? Have we stacked it yet?
It's probably lighter. I, I mean, I don't know. It depends on what, what you continue. You're going to have the next two meetings involved in this, perhaps.
There's no more soap opera moments tonight for me. We're good.
I'd suggest you table it September.
Till sometime in September, and then let us judge based on the agendas, maybe?
Yeah.
Sure.
Does that create problems with, for us with pending, or potential pending flag, flag lot issues?
Oh, that's a good question.
I'm not-
That is a good question.
Not aware of any, but-
There is, there is a couple going on right now.
Well, but if they've alre-
That one worked on Fourth East?
If they've already applied, then you, you can't affect them anyway.
Fair point. Nothing you can do. So did you motion to table it, Stephanie?
Yes.
Until September?
I do.
So moved and seconded to table this item number six until September. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
That's, passes four to one. Number seven, award bid to cap construction for labor and old cast preca-
Thank you.
Cast for materials on the Frontage Road culvert project. Steve, anything you want to say there?
I think I'll just answer questions. The staff reported, explain why we're doing this, where the source of funding's coming from. It's according to the plan, so I recommend you award the bids. Any questions?
This, and remember the whole, this is, as Cory would say, part of a, a plan. We're going to do culverts, and then bike lanes on top of that.
Yeah, the, the next year, will you use the federal money?
If you're going to ban bike, since Centerville, we may not want to. We don't need the culverts. We need the culverts anyway, but-
Yeah, I think we're okay.
The timing.
The only question I had was on the, the tax amount. Why are we paying taxes on that? From Old Castle Precast, shows sixteen thousand eight twenty-eight plus one thousand one hundred ninety-four seventy-nine tax.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not the expert on when you do and when you don't, but this is a situation where the state does require us to pay taxes on the materials that we're purchasing.
Okay.
Yeah.
Then I will motion to award the bids to NAP construction for the amount of three hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars, or three hundred and sixty-one thousand seven hundred and four dollars and forty cents for labor into Old Castle Precast in the amount of sixteen thousand eight twenty-eight plus one thousand one hundred ninety-four seventy-nine for tax for the Frontage Road culverts project.
Is there a second?
Second.
And I will note before you vote that, I mean, there are other materials that the contractor will supply, bedding materials and so forth, but these are the ones that we're buying.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Thank you. Uh, next item is mayor's report. I think this is relatively quick. We do not have a, a date for pedestrian bridge ribbon cutting. Given the, the weather, I am still in favor of, of waiting and doing a, a larger ribbon cutting together with the trail. I messaged back and forth with Fred Hale about when the his, when the trail will be done. He came back to me and said, "Two weeks," which I think is not realistic, so.
Was he saying even the piece along the Maverick Frontage, or just his part?
I don't think so. But he said, "We should talk about it," so.
Yeah.
I, I need to call him and understand what, what's the phasing of this. But I think the, uh, the message to the Trails Committee is, start planning something late August, early September. In September, the weather will be a lot, you know, not quite as hot. Might be a better time, but, and we'll try to get in the next two weeks a better idea of, of the construction schedule of that.
All right.
Does that sound okay?
Mayor, I haven't driven over there recently. Are all of the barricades gone?
It is, it is open. The pathway needs to be cleaned, and Parks Department has agreed to do that, but it hasn't happened yet.
All right.
Yeah.
I'd ask the chief, at the request of some citizens, and maybe you saw a letter to the editor, I'd ask the chief to look at some of the crosswalks that are used around Jenny P. Stewart on 400 West. He and, uh, Canor Street Supervisor looked at those. They have agreed to put in some more of the curb markers that mark a, a crosswalk and make some other potential improvements along 400 West. At some of the, there's two various crosswalks that people at Jenny P. Stewart use. So we'll see those improvements, which I think is, is good. Related to that, Robin, we'll appreciate, uh, Public Works staff is also working on a solution to remotely turn on and off, um, the traffic signals for school crossings, and add a light. If we do this, we're also going to add a light on the inside so you could see from where the cross guard stands whether the light is on or whether the light is off.
Cool. So is this something, is this going to be with?
So this, we, we've been testing a Bluetooth switch that I just bought off of Amazon.
Oh, you are amazing. Thank you.
And they, uh, it, it worked surprisingly at a couple of hundred feet. Unfortunately, after some testing and smashing into boxes, the switch failed, so I'm not clear if it was the, a, what it was, but they'll do an analysis on that. But we're making some progress there.
Thank you very, thank you very much. I knew if we could get somebody that was just understood some technology, I knew it wasn't that big of a deal.
It's not done yet. Don't-
I know, but thank you. Thank you very much.
Hasn't approved anything. But, uh, they, because the lights are on Main Street, technically those lights, uh, belong to them, but, but we-
What about the ones that aren't?
The ones that aren't, yeah, we can do whatever we want. So we did all the testing up on 400 East. Where, where we don't need any permission to do anything.
Thank you. Thanks for following through on that. I appreciate it.
Uh, Fourth of July Parade feedback. We'll be meeting with the Chair of Celebration and the Parade next, next, I think next Monday, a meeting with them, assuming Jake can keep it on his calendar. He's- August 1st?
August 1st. Two, two Mondays away.
Oh, two Mondays away. Okay, August 1st. Two, we've got two weeks. So you've got two weeks to give me any feedback on the parade. I'm not sure what you've, that, that we obviously had some challenges staging and moving along on the north end of town. You didn't hear any complaints on that?
I didn't hear anything about that.
Have you passed along your complaints? I was looking at Robin.
Yes, she passed along those complaints about the content of the parade. Uh, I-
I had some about that as well.
I got some confirmation of the same thing.
I nominated Robin to be in charge of the parade next year.
Is she going to resign, is she going to resign to the council?
What was the complaints? Are we going to discuss that at all?
Well, I don't think this is the place.
But if, the, one idea I just want to warm you up to, suggested by our police chief, is if we're going to continue the longer parade route, which I, I got positive feedback on the longer parade route.
I do, too.
That, that we're very limited in the staging space on the north end. With things that have changed in our community the last ten years, there's all sorts of space on the south end that's not in heavy use.
Might be redeveloped by next year.
It may be redeveloped by next year, but in the, in the rare case that it's not, the chief and the police officer want to throw out the idea of starting in the south and going to the north because you need more space
To stage.
To stage than you do to disband.
That's true.
And so.
I've always thought that as well. Um, the issue is that usually a lot of our entries go straight to the West Bountiful Parade because they're not on different days.
And West Bountiful changed, at least this year, they were on a different day.
This year because of the holiday following.
So, but, but they'd moved theirs to the evening, and I don't know if that's, I'll ask their mayor if they're going to continue that.
Ask for future plan, yeah, because that's the reason. I think otherwise, I think otherwise it makes sense logistically, and also it makes sense to sometimes mix it up, too, right?
It used to go the other way.
It did?
Really?
Yeah, years ago, it, it started over here.
I think you'd have mass rebellion, switching it.
What are they going to do?
I don't know.
Ask for candy?
Leave it all on the street.
Stage there, Jay Taylor and Dick's Market and that area.
Yeah, it's such a good.
Okay, so consider, share with me any feedback you have, and if you've got people that give you feedback, ask if they would be willing to be involved next year in the, in the parade or in the celebration. It works a lot better if we get people engaged early than if we're begging in March for, for people to, to serve and help.
So do we have anybody signed up for next year?
We had someone who said last year they would be willing to be the overall celebration chairs. I need to confirm that that's, uh,
Still there.
Still the case.
Well.
Sometimes people, they couldn't do it this, I, one of the people that I'd asked this year that said no. And we'll see if they're still feeling patriotic. But I could use a lot more help if, you know, people want to be involved.
Did Robin pass the comment to you, that the comment had been made that we tried to have two people in each position where one is the lead and one is the second, and, and obviously with the comment you just made about not being able to get enough people, that's difficult.
It is. That, that would be ideal.
Mary Walters just said, "Holy cow, that would make things so much better."
I had suggested that we pick the, whoever's going to be over at this, for next year and the next year, and have them just shadow a little bit so that, because I think if you did it one year, you'd learn so many things, but you don't want to do it the next year. But if you had somebody there with you that had learned along with you, and, you know, maybe we could carry on the things that we need to be learning.
And it might actually decrease the load enough that people are not as nervous about taking it on.
Yeah, yeah.
Great. Please, please share with me names.
I was going to say, this has always been the intent, but the reality is, it's hard to get that many volunteers to agree to do that.
Give them, I'd give them a stipend to do it. It's a big enough parade.
Well, that, that, that's the other thing that I'd like the city council to think about. If you saw the crowd that was there that night, there were a lot of people there. Uh, there's-
That night or that day?
The, the evening, the concert.
At the concert.
On, on Saturday night. That's where most, most of the cost is expended there, not, not much, and on the parade, both of those. And so the city council could consider increasing the, the budget for the overall celebration as a way to make it easier. All right, um, maybe we'll come back and beg for that later, but consider that when you're, when we're asking people to do these things. And I also, I, I put up the Utopia Monthly Financial Report that George and I receive it if you have any comments or, or questions.
Nope, the lines look the same as they did before. Utopia flat, UIA grows.
Next is a report from Tammy on the REC district and Parks and Rec Committee.
One of the most interesting threads of conversation that we've been having, both at the REC district level and the Parks Committee, is the lack of green field space, and that it's not keeping up with demand.
Green field space?
Field space. So we've got so much soccer interest, and now there's this quote-unquote new sport of lacrosse that uses that same field space, and, yeah, I mean, it just keeps growing and growing, so. So it's been an interesting point of discussion. From the REC district standpoint, we do offer a soccer program, that's a REC level soccer program, and the, um, there are soccer providers, basically. They're Centerville City's soccer providers. And we have had to cap the number that we can accept, and we're turning people away. So one of the interesting elements there is that REC level soccer, I think, in my mind and people's mind, is the soccer that you're more casual, you're trying it out, you're playing for fun, and you should be able to go to a neighborhood field, you know, not too far away. Where you get to comp level is where you have to reach farther out to, to get the kind of competition that you want, and it's expected that you're going to travel, and so one of the issues is that we feel it would be very appropriate to be able to use on the REC level the school district land that's available. But the school tr- district already has come under contract for the past many years with the competition level leagues, and so, um-
And some of the REC leagues that are run by, I mean, like Forza Recreation, that's-
Yeah.
Still a recreation level league.
Is Forza commercial operation?
Yes. And so we, as a REC board, are starting discussions with the school district about this. And probably we'll end up going to the board and have discussions with them. When those contracts go up, could we maybe look at doing it differently? The, the competition level leagues put a financial investment into it. They offer to mow the lawns for the district, and so that was the incentive to get into a contract with them. And so that's a constant point of discussion at the REC district. It's also a constant point of discussion with the city, of course. We've got the new community park about to be finished, which will be new field space. And Bruce and Cory Haddock from the REC district have already had conversations about giving, besides priority, of course, going to Centerville City and its events, giving priority to, to REC level soccer and other events there. And as far as trying to finish that up, and you'll hear more about this as time goes on, looking at creative ways to get that money sooner rather than later, so that those fields are available. So just to put that out there, that that is kind of on the top of everyone's priority list right now, and if you have any feelings on it or thoughts, we'd love to, to hear feedback from you, and I can take it back to both of those committees slash boards. So, and then at the Parks Committee level, of course, we will continue to move forward. It's kind of a slow process, but with the next steps in trying to plan out what might happen at the Island View Park, we're at the just baby level of that. Parks Committee, a couple of members have taken on the assignment to take the survey responders who said we'd want to be involved in a focus group, and start figuring out how to start that process going, and getting people involved so that it can be a grassroots effort.
I have a question.
Yeah.
And I actually laughed at this the first time it was brought up when I was just a spectator, when I remember whether it was Larry or Ken said something about a splash park, and I thought, yeah. I can't believe the amount of people that approach me about putting a splash pad in one of our parks.
Yeah.
Is that-
There are some people on the Parks Committee who very, very much desire that, and the community-
Are you getting a lot of community?
Let me, let me say, the way that it started, though, is that the Parks Committee was just kind of a, in a very blank slate open way, a couple of years ago, a few years ago, had an open house process. Tell us what you want out of our parks process, or out of your parks. Tell us what you want out of our parks process, or out of your parks, tell us what you want. And splash pad came in, top, 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 all the time. And so it wasn't anybody pushing the idea on anyone, it's what the citizens truly love, right?
I can't believe, I've never even been to one.
Oh, you haven't?
But I have, I have had so many people come up and, and why can't you get it? And you need to do this and you need to do that and I'm like...
I mean, Stephanie brought up that she was surprised to see it on the survey and, you know, when I thought about it, I thought, well, yeah, I guess I was surprised too. But, um, the Parks Committee certainly didn't have an understanding of the cost that is involved, a huge cost to build it and then not only that, but a huge commitment to maintain. Um, and you have sanitation issues that aren't pretty and so, um, I think just me explaining that at the, at a, at a committee meeting kind of tampered that down. But it'll continue to be a discussion point because the citizens really love splash pads and they drive a long ways to go to them on a regular basis, so. There's that. But no, I, I, I don't think anyone's seriously considering, or it's not in anyone's mind right now that we're gonna put a splash.
They considered the splash pad in the dog park and I'm thinking, okay, now they're just being funny and then all these people were like, I'm like, whoa.
A lot of people want a dog park and a lot of people want a splash pad.
Thank you, Tammy. I, I had, uh, just some feedback for the Parks and Rec Committee to consider.
Yes, please.
I've attended a couple of events, concerts at the Leighton, um, is it the Ed Kinley Amphitheater they have up there?
Same.
Uh, and before the event, they had, on, on the, on the screen, just as people were coming in, they had a, a screensaver up there that was saying, you know, brought to you by Leighton's, uh, they call it a ramp, taxi, Recreation R P Muse- Museums Parks. And they, uh, so there was a nice screensaver saying, brought to you by this, that, you know, your, your tax dollars at work, uh, here's other events going on in the city, here's other events going on in the community.
Good.
Uh, and I, I thought, wouldn't it be nice if, if somebody on the Parks and Rec Committee was willing to, to take on something like that, to have that, you know, play before movies in the park and you could list some of the other events going on. Um, you know, there's no reason you couldn't do this and have it playing at times, you know, on the screen in the Whittaker Museum, that TV screen, or frankly, on one of the screens at Center Point, saying, here's some, you know, city events going on, here's, uh, you know, your, your tax dollars at work, here's the good things that are happening in our community.
The screen did, what is part of development out of the lobby, that a screen in the lobby?
Yeah, we do have, we have a plan. The IT Steering Committee is, is working on a, a screen in the lobby that would also kind of list the things that are going on, you know, the Parks and Rec Committee or the court is, is here, is there, but it could also run, run that. So, that's a kind of a long-term project, trying to figure out how, how we could maintain it, who'd be responsible for that. I mean, Jake usually volunteers to do everything, but, uh...
I'm protecting him.
He, he, he wanted to make sure this is something manageable and not, not have to update it every, every hour of every day.
Yeah. Well, I, I like it, when you go down to like Pioneer Theater, they always announce that this is brought to you by Zap. So, every performance they do, they let you know that, that this is, you know, your ticket price is offset by, by Zap taxes. So I think it's great to make sure that people are aware that there is a funding source and that's what it's being used for.
Well, we need to be sure to be accurate though because right now the funding source is the general fund, so. We haven't specifically, yeah, we haven't specifically...
I, I feel like...
We could switch it over.
Right, but yeah, where, where it's appropriate, I definitely think it should be home.
No, because it's a, kind of an operation.
Up until...
Let me clarify.
Yeah.
Nine, until April, ninety percent of the rap tax was going towards debt service. The other ten percent was going into the general fund. It wasn't earmarked for anything specifically, but by law it has to be used for eligible purposes. So, you could make the argument that that was being used for movies in the park, but you could also make the argument that it was being used for other parks-related purposes. We never really specifically in budget process said this is what...
So, an interesting follow-up question for staff to come back with an answer is, um, can we just specify rap funds to go towards that? Is that under the legitimate rap fund uses?
You're gonna be making decisions about all the rap tax here in the next few months.
I, I certainly like the idea of allocating a portion of rap tax to those, to Whittaker, to the Movies in the Park and to, uh, Center Point. Certainly there's still some...
And regularly remind people that they chose to, thank you they chose to.
That's something they, they voted for.
I'm very impressed with the Movies in the Park and the amount of people that attend.
You're talking about increasing the fourth of July bud- celebration? You're talking about increasing the budget for the Fourth of July celebration?
Events in the park.
You're asking, is that an eligible rap tax expenditure? I, I don't know if that...
I don't know, I have to look into that.
I'm looking it up. Should, staff will come back to us with an opinion on those event type funded things.
All right, thanks. Steve, city manager's report.
Okay, well, let's continue from where we left off. Uh, you mentioned the rap tax and that just is one of the work sessions that I anticipate you would have over the next three months. There are several other topics that need to be scheduled for work sessions. Mayor and I reviewed the calendar this morning. Some of these we are recommending, we, we go ahead and set with these certain topics, but other topics, we're not sure which date yet would work best. On August second, uh, we would have Dee Hanson and Dal Wayman come and meet with you in a work session, which they have requested to report and answer questions about their food waste energy project and other sewer district operations. Um, I'm gonna be gone that night and, and that'd be a great topic for you to have while I'm gone. I don't need to be there for that work session, in other words. So that's our recommendation, is you have them come on August second. Uh, August sixteenth, we're hoping to be ready with the sidewalk analysis, completion of the inventory, the analysis of the data, uh, what we think it means and so forth and share that with you and then, uh, have some discussion about a, a process and framework for, uh, developing policy in the months to come. But first you need to understand what the data is. And that would be the focus on August sixteenth. We'll have the intern making that presentation, be good experience for her before she goes back to school for her second year of grad school. Um, in September, we're thinking that possibly on the sixth of September, you will have a meeting with the Parks Committee about the Parks Capital Improvement Plan, the Community Park Expansion, the cost estimate related to that and that could be, you know, roll into, be part of a rap tax discussion, but, um, I, I haven't quite fleshed that out as the agenda for that one and I'm not sure that'll be on the sixth, this is an uncertain one. On the twentieth of September, we've targeted that for the youth city council to meet with you in their annual meeting. Tell you what their plans are for the year, talk with you about how you might want to be involved with them, how they might want to be involved with you, um, how, if any, they want to be plugged into the issues, that kind of thing. They will provide dinner that night. They've always done a good job on the dinners. And then, um, other topics, I need to get into work sessions or I'd like to. We still need to have Randy come and talk about the new water position and also the stormwater regulations and why he thinks that means we need to build a decant building that's in the utility, drainage utility budget. Uh, I, maybe, uh, I can, I, I, I think he's more comfortable with that discussion on the new position in a work session, but I'll be chatting with him next week and I'll have an update for you, a recommendation as to how we handle that one, what kind of a setting. Uh, we also want to, the RDA and the Administrative Control Board should meet, in my opinion, in the next month or so for several reasons. One is to review and ask questions about the annual audit, which I have already forwarded to you, but I think it's good in the, from a fiduciary role that you have, that you have a chance to sit down and ask questions about the audit. That's one subject. The other is you'll have the six-month report for this year in hand by then. You do have a lease amendment you need to consider and then fourth, uh, I think you ought to have a conversation with Bountiful City reps about whether they're gonna use any of their rap tax to help out with Center Point. Now, in looking at, what, what can we schedule this? In the next month or so, with all these other work sessions, the mayor suggested, why don't we offer to go over to Bountiful and have it at their place? They meet on the other Tuesdays and have a work session on a Tuesday night, a second or fourth Tuesday night over in Bountiful. Would you be agreeable to that?
I could do a second, but not a fourth.
On a regular basis, the fourth is out, is what you're saying?
Yes, 'cause I meet with the museum.
And second, I meet with Parks and Rec.
Oh, well, by what time? Because this would be before their council meeting.
Yeah, if we were done earlier, that would work.
Seven o'clock.
So, yeah.
Museum is at six thirty.
Cause their meetings, their regular meeting starts at seven.
Museum is six thirty. I missed one, their most recent one because of the city council one.
So if they would do a five to six, maybe?
Maybe something like that.
If they have another item they could work on in the other hour?
So, that would be a second Tuesday, sounds like the most viable because the Parks Committee starts at seven.
I have, uh, scheduled my life around first and third Tuesdays and therefore many second and fourth Tuesdays, I am not available. I will be available if I am not scheduled out.
So even if it was earlier in the evening, would you be okay though, Bill? Like five thirty, five, five thirty?
Usually if I, if I'm not available, I'm not available.
Oh.
And I have four weeks, four weeks that I'm supposed to go to Lake Powell during the summer.
Okay, well, we could wait till September.
September, well, October. I go in September, September is my big month.
We'll just take a big paper cut out of you, Bill, and send it in the chair.
And so are we, but were you talking about second Tuesday for the RDA ACB over at...
Bountiful.
Over Bountiful.
I'm gonna be out of town, so I'm gonna miss the Parks and Rec meeting as well, so, but I don't know if I need to be there. I mean, so I, I feel comfortable with you scheduling.
What about second Tuesday in September?
Should be fine.
I, I'd take the opposite approach, Bill. I'd usually just say to my family, I'm gonna be gone every Tuesday night.
Well, maybe we'll look at the second Tuesday of September and, uh, if you're not all there, I don't think that's as critical.
You have a majority of directors there?
You know, the ACB is...
Well, it, the, the RDA, it's usually, it's a combination, we usually have RDA and ACB, so it's all of you on the RDA.
Second Tuesday in September, I can be there.
You can, you say?
Can.
Let me try that then. Let's focus on that. Then one other final date, um, Monday, September twenty-sixth. Mayor, did you say you are gonna be gone or you aren't?
I, I'm not, I'm not certain, but let's, let's plan on that date for now.
So this is a proposed date for the annual volunteer recognition dinner.
It's a Monday.
Monday night, we do it and we say, all right, you volunteers, you can bring all the media, all the members of your family that live in your household so that they can bring them all out that night. And last year we moved it to the outside in a park, had it catered and it was very well-received. I think it was actually, they prefer that to the ways we've done it before.
Yeah, I think it went really well.
So, are you okay with that date? September twenty-sixth, Monday night? Okay, good. All right, uh, let's see, what else I got here? Oh, the other thing I wanna do is, is give kudos to Jake over here. My silent right hand, he's so quiet over here.
Probably asleep.
Uh, wake up Jake. Uh, Jake has just completed a two-year program conducted by the International City Management Association. It's called the Emerging Leaders Development Program. And I'd like Jake to tell you what it involved, how he was selected to be in it, uh, the numbers across the nation that were involved. It was, it's really a fairly limited program in numbers and I commend Jake for sticking with it. And Jake, would you give him a feel for what you did?
Yeah, sure. Um, well, I started the program, like Steve said, a couple of years ago. It was kind of a, kind of a refresher of my NPA program mainly for me, but different in, in that we were all having our discussions and learning from a, a position of experience rather than being a student. So, and a lot of my classmates, uh, came from all over the United States. The majority of them, I would say, would be on the other side of the Mississippi, so it was interesting to hear their perspective and, and the issues that they deal with, the city council, politically, uh, revenues, expenditures, you name it. Uh, we, we covered all sorts of topics, uh, all, all the different services that cities provide, as well as, uh, you know, we had some human resource discussions. Uh, we had a couple of weeks talking about ethics. Uh, we had the, both presidents of the ICMA from both years. Uh, we were able to talk with them for, um, for a session. Every single month we got together as classmates and, and had somebody that was online and, and we'd have these discussions and we'd have, you know, reading materials that we had to go over beforehand to, to discuss. Um, but overall, you know, it was a pretty good experience. I, I learned quite a bit and, and, uh, I was able to, uh, expand my network as well, uh, just kind of get some of that perspective from other parts of, of the country. But, yeah, we started off, I think there was about fifty that were in the program. That's, that's how many they admit, uh, every six months and sixteen of us finished up. You weren't allowed to miss a single session or, or else you'd have to start over.
Rude.
Yeah. I was at Disneyland, like the second one, so I, I had to take a break from Space Mountain so I could participate in a discussion for an hour.
No deferral agreement for you.
So, it's a significant investment on Jake's part and I want to commend him publicly for making that effort.
Good job.
Thank you.
That's all I have in my report.
Are you so relieved that it's done or do you miss it?
Oh, I'm relieved.
So that completes my report unless there are some questions.
Thank you, Steve, and thanks Jake for your efforts to, uh, develop your professional skills. Uh, I'm not aware of any other Michelin's business since we've already...
Can I mention one thing? Um, the first half, and this is for anybody that's watching right now on YouTube, the first half of this meeting before our, our break was not publicly live. Uh, there was a setting that was changed inside of the program. I changed it back, so the second half is live and recorded. Uh, planning commission, the last planning commission was also not live and was not recorded for, because of the same issue, the same setting issue.
Can we put together a checklist for the, whoever's doing it so we can...
Yeah, I did that perfect right now.
Cause I'm sure we'll hear about it.
Yep.
So, so it wasn't available in live, but is it available after the fact?
After the fact, it's not available because of the setting that was on here. There's a unique, uh, there, there's a unique link that was established for those. I'll, I'll just go in and see if I can find those links, we might be able to see it, but...
The audio recording that's required to be on the state website, I assume that's, that's good and that will be available, audio recording.
All right, we, we had discussed, uh, the possibility of a closed meeting. My recommendation is that we do our annual duty due as city manager review next on, on August second, uh, rather than this evening.
Tonight.
If that works for you, unless somebody, uh, would, would prefer to do it tonight, but I'd, I'd prefer to do it next, next meeting. So, I've got feedback from a couple of you already. Be great if I could get feedback from everyone.
Can I request a different form?
What are we talking about?
It is really difficult to fill out that form because so little of it is something that I can, can judge Steve on.
Okay.
Because, because my interaction with him is not in an office setting, is not in a technical setting, is not in a, so many of those are, I could take a stab in the dark, but they really don't mean anything because I don't have any interactions with him.
It's kind of like coloring in the bubbles and it's like, you know, do you want us to just make a picture because that's how I used to take my tests.
All those public admissions came out. All those public admissions come out.
You really want to say that live?
Sorry, Mrs. Norriston.
So, I, I welcome feedback in any way that, that you want to provide it, um, written, verbal, that just...
Qualified, whatever, limited.
We, we, we all need feedback to, to improve.
Okay.
So, with that, I'd look for a motion to, uh...
Adjourn, still moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We got out before you.